We'll call the meeting to order and Kyle, do join us please while we salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You have a roll call?
Ron Miller.
Here.
Ness.
Here.
Haglund.
Here.
Schneider.
Here.
Mayewski.
Here. Next is our public forum. Is there anyone who wishes to speak about something that is not on tonight's agenda? Okay, we'll close the public forum. Agenda, I've got two changes, two amendments to the agenda tonight. We are moving items nine A and nine B up to six in places we have no public hearings this evening. So there'll be six A and six B.
I move to approve the agenda as amended.
All second half.
All in favor?
Aye.
That brings us then to the approval of the consent agenda.
So move, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And that brings us to public hearings, or in place of public hearings, to our resolution five fifteen eighteen, award of bonds.
Mayor Council, good evening. Just agreeing with Northland Securities. Tonight for your consideration, we do have a resolution before you for the issuance of sale of three million eight hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in general obligation, street reconstruction bonds, series two thousand and eighteen eight for the city of Scandia. We did hold a sale in our office this morning and received bids on your behalf. Happy to say that we received four bids, which may not seem like a lot, but being that there were seven other Minnesota DQs on the calendar this morning, it was really great result. The packet that's before you that I handed out prior to the meeting does have information related to the sale. I'm just going to go over a few items, being that most of the information related to the bond sale is familiar to you that you've seen this a few times now in the past few months. So of course, the proceeds of the bonds will be used to finance street reconstruction projects here within the city. And of course, pay costs of issuance associated with the issuance of bonds. We do have a structure over fifteen years with relatively level principal and interest payments. And Neil had provided some information a few months back related to how the overall impact of the levy will be very, very small, if any, or maybe actually decreasing due to moving some things around from levy for capital projects and now that it'll be switched over to debt service as a result of these projects. The city had not been rated before, and we did go to standard and force for a rating on this bond issue. Happy to say that we came back with a really positive result there. The overall rating report is included in that packet in the very back. But I'm going to go over just a few of the highlights, the comments that S and P came back with. They did talk about the very strong economy here in Scandia, very strong budgetary flexibility, and very strong liquidity here in the city. They also did comment on strong management, of course, and then the framework. And I will just say, job well done to Neil, who was very well prepared for this call, especially not having gone through this before with the city. And S and P obviously was very impressed with the city's management, so a great job. So again, we'll go back to the overall results of the sale. What we were planning on was an issuance amount of three million eight hundred and ninety thousand dollars. We did receive a bid with premium on it of around sixty thousand dollars. So we were able to reduce the bond size to three million eight hundred and thirty-five thousand, which leaves about forty-eight hundred or so from that premium in a rounding amount, just because we have to issue in five thousand dollar nominations. So that'll just be cash to the city, so you can use that to offset your first debt payment, pay for any change orders, et cetera. We were planning on an average interest rate around three point zero five. It actually came in at three point zero three, so really in line with what we were expecting. As far as true interest cost, we were expecting around three point one eight, and that was actually about twenty basis points lower, so ten point nine eight. And that's a result of that premium that was received. I'm happy to answer any questions for you. But again, we do have a resolution before you for the issuance of sale of three million eight hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in street reconstruction bonds.
Are there any questions?
No, nice job, all the way around.
Yeah, thank you very much, and Neil, thank you.
Both of you, thank you.
Yep. And I move that approve resolution zero five dash one five dash one eight dash zero six, awarding of bonds.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then that brings us to our discussion of a liquor license application for new business at two one oh five oh Ozark Avenue. And Neil, you want to start with this one?
Uh, I'll, Brenda?
Where you want to?
Oh, it's to Brenda?
Brenda does liquor licenses.
Oh, Brenda, okay.
Right, I'll put my report. So Matt, Matt Miller is here. He's the current owner of the Brookside in Marin County, Troy. And after the closing of Chico's Bar and Grill, it's been closed since January, Matt's in the process of purchasing that business and plans to have a pizza and sandwich bar and grill there, which also would need to have Scandia issue him a new liquor license in his name of to operate on a Brookside Pizza and Hoagies. So Matt currently has authorization to have a liquor license in Marin County, Troy. And background check came back with no concerns or issues that would prevent Scandia from issuing Matt Miller the license. He anticipates opening shortly after July first, so we can issue the permit for six months of this year. So he's paid the application fee, upgraded to six months, and with no concerns, we would recommend approval of issuing the liquor license for his operation.
Okay, and Matt is here this evening. Does anybody have any questions of Brenda or of Matt?
No. Do you want to comment on all of that anymore, or you certainly don't have to, but...
As a mayor member of this council, thank you. I don't really have anything more to say other than maybe just to clarify just how we came to where we're at, what exactly we're going to be serving, how we're going to operate. Do you have any questions regarding that? Happy to answer any. Brookside is wholly employee-owned and managed. There's five partners down there, including myself. Six if you include my dad, but I don't. Although he's very important. All five of us will be operating up here, and we made a decision that we didn't want, we wanted to expand. We didn't want to do anything that would harm the business in Marin that we've taken a lot of time and effort to build up. And we thought, well, concentrate on what we do really well. We get a lot of feedback on our pizza. I think, you know, an old school pizza parlor is very family-friendly, kid-oriented as well. So we're going to do pizza, hoagies, salads, appetizers, some kids' menu stuff beyond that. And then we'll have a full service bar. I don't think we'll open for lunch. We'll probably open at two thirty, kind of in time for the after-a-crowd leading into dinner. Oh, and I'm sorry. We'll also do rotisserie chicken to go. I'll have a rotisserie right out front when you walk in. You'll be able to see it. We'll have sides ready to go, so something easy for the community to come in, take out. Like at Brookside, close early. I don't see any reason to stay open later than eleven during the weeks and weekend, I mean, midnight time. And the weekend, we'd open at eleven, we propose, just hit the weekend traffic.
Do you anticipate changes to the building?
Some interior changes, yeah. I would like to put brick along that wall as you walk in. I'd like to hang some acoustical tiles to deal with some of the sound. And then once operated, see exactly what that means and what, you know, further needs to be done. I also want to make it a fun, clean environment for people to come to and have fun. I plan on putting a twenty-four-foot shuffleboard in, game in, bring back some of the, kind of the bar games, the Buck Hunter, the Golden T Pinball, just to interest kids in what crane machine toys for kids. Going to have a Coke freestyle machine where you can make one hundred and thirty different combinations of drinks, and so...
With your smartphone, you said?
Yeah, I know, and I guess there's an app that kids can make their own concoction and hold the phone up to the machine and it works, so, and makes their own drinks. I don't even quite understand that there's, I think sent someone out to train you how to use it, so I'll be interested to know. But that's just kind of a sniff it. We're very excited to be coming into Scandia. We love the St. Lloyd Valley area and have been very well received and enjoyed our time in Marin thus far. And really like the communities and the nature of the, just the nature of the communities, so...
And it'll be, he said it'll be the same partners up here as at Brookside?
Correct, yes. You'll see a lot of the same carryover. You'll see a few of us more than the others, but they're all involved in the decision-making process of the operations.
Well, we welcome you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Just, so you know, I'm very, I'm very glad that you're coming in. It's nice to see the Chico's restaurant is being filled again. I would encourage you to reach out to the owners of the Scandia Pizza in your backyard, or in your front yard.
Yes.
They've called me a couple of times, very concerned, not knowing what's going on and afraid you're going to force them out of business.
Not my, not my intention at all, and I will...
If we can't regulate that, then we're not going to try.
We'll definitely reach out to them.
I just said, I would encourage you to reach out to them and try to work with them if you can.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
We have an economic development authority here as well, and we have a loan program that's in conjunction with Washington County. I don't know if that could be applicable to anything you do, but keep it in mind. And at some point in the future, perhaps we can talk and understand your business better and see if there's something there that might be able to help you.
Sure. All assistance is appreciated.
Yeah, yeah.
I just appreciate the support and any time anyone in the community ever has any questions, I'd probably make myself available, so, okay?
Thank you.
Anything else?
We're glad you're here.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you, Mayor Council.
I move we approve the liquor license for Brookside Pizza and Hoagies.
Second.
Go ahead, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Close, no?
I'll stay on.
Nope. One out.
One out.
I don't think you need it, too.
Let's see.
Okay, one abstention, yes. The, that brings us then up to our committee reports, first from Parks and Rec.
Mayor and State Council and staff, good evening. Couple of things from the PRC tonight. Two things that you've had, you've had a chance to review are we have two resolutions to accept donations that resulted from Winterfest. The first one was from our friends at Bolton and Mank for the show sculpture contest, and also from the PRC button proceeds. That's what tools, three hundred and fourteen dollars and fifty-nine cents. That's resolution five fifteen eighteen oh one. And we would need a motion to approve that. And then right behind that one is we have another one. And by the way, for the first one, those donations will be credited to improvements on Lewis Goguen, on the first one. And then on the second one, five fifteen eighteen oh two, is funds to be directed to the Patoah Skating Park. We have five hundred and forty-four dollars from Maestris and five hundred dollars that came from Forest Lake Floral from the Scandia Cup. So with that, we would need motions to accept these two resolutions.
Okay, can we move on that now?
Do you need those separately?
Yeah, we should.
Should be separate, yes.
Do them separately. So is there a motion for the first?
I would move to approve resolution oh five fifteen eighteen oh one, accepting donations for Lewis Goguen Park.
Second.
Okay, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next one?
I would also move to approve resolution oh five fifteen eighteen oh two, accepting donations for Woge Hoagies.
Which Hoagies?
Pick Park.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
The next one is we have tennis court replacement. We've reported on this a couple of times. We had a couple of different options in what to do with the tennis courts over here in the community center. And we, because, you know, pickleball's fairly popular, but we're really not sure how it's going to catch on. We really didn't want to recommend that we eliminate one of the tennis courts to put additional pickleball. Probably not the right one. So what you have in front of you is the proposal to accept the lowest bids for tennis court reconstruction. With the reconstruction, we will have pickleball courts lined on it, and we also will have some accommodations to the nets. There's slightly different net types for tennis and pickleball, so that, you know, someone that could go over there and could make the adjustments necessary if you play pickleball. But we'll end up with those two tennis courts and two pickleball courts overlaid on those. And also in this proposal, we have some wording that says that they, we want to add striping for pickleball over at the Barton Johnson Courts, too. If we have another tournament, if we get a little bit more demand, that'll be a little bit, nice place to go with some of that additional demand. Pickleball does seem to get, once it catches on, it's pretty popular in the communities, and so I wouldn't be surprised if that happened. So what you have in front of you is the recommendations for paving, resurfacing, and painting of the courts. The option number one is recommended, but that is a little bit over what was in the capital improvement plan process. And so what we would need is to approve four thousand two hundred and thirty-three dollars to cover the additional costs. I think the capital improvement plan group put these numbers out there based on some bids that we had prior. And that's why we thought forty thousand would be adequate, but it's just a little bit more than what was in the study. So what we're asking for here is approval of option number one, that we have Shifsky pave the courts and tennis courts paint. And paint the courts and do the post installations for forty-four thousand nine hundred and thirty-three.
And procedurally, I think the best way to do it would be to, we do have a resolution later on in the agenda to do a budget amendment. So if you wanted to proceed with this, what we would do is just authorize going ahead with awarding the proposals. And later on in the agenda, we can increase the budget for that additional amount.
I make a motion that we accept option one. Do these costing for the two hundred dollars for Barton Johnson?
Yes, it does.
Thank you. I'll second the motion.
Okay, any further discussion?
I'm just curious, how long does this last for? I mean, it is a chunk of change, just, you know, how good are the, before we'd have to do something similar again?
I have to defer that to Adam. Can you address that? What would we expect?
Well, this is a total reconstruction, too.
Right.
So it'd be still using the same base and the same drain tile that's already within the area of the tennis courts right now, present. So it'd be just removing the asphalt and then repaving it with the equipment, removing the asphalt, the poles, and the basketball hoop and something. Then that's got to cure for a while, and then after that is done, then they'll come and do the lines and set the course and things like that. It should last, on average, about fifteen years, probably a good ten without cracking, but then at some point in time, you'll probably have to do a little patching and that kind of thing.
It sounds like our streets.
It basically is a small street, but luckily we don't drive on it.
So it'll last a bit longer.
So this is a mill and overlay?
Well, it'd be nice if we could, but the folks would place in a wrong position for that, so, yeah, no, we have to clear the whole thing out.
I know, in terms of length, I had Adam look at a product that would have, would be nice, except it's, you know, twenty thousand or twenty-seven thousand over the budget. There would have been, you would lay it on top of there. That probably would have had a little bit more cushion, would have been more, probably, you know, senior-friendly.
More rubberized kind of a surface?
It's more like an overlay, like, almost like panels. And those had a twenty-year guarantee. But, I mean, the cost, I think, you know, if it was, if the differential was a little smaller, we probably would have recommended that, because just, you know, for the people who use that, I think having that softer playing surface would have been nice.
From pickleball's perspective, yes, it would, but that cost right now. And then, and then the other thing we talked about, too, it turns out to be a real high demand. There's going to be other options of space on the east side of those courts. If we ever decided that we wanted to pursue funding in future capital planning or look for other donations, that'll be possible. For now, I think we will know in the next few years if this becomes popular, if pickleball becomes popular in this area. Otherwise, we have, can meet the needs of the folks who like to play tennis.
Well, Jerry, was there talk about the Lions pitching in on some of this, too? I remember at the PRC meeting.
Yeah.
Did anybody talk, anybody down there?
Well, what they had offered is, you know, if we were going to add four pickleball courts and do something a little bit more extensive than simply a replacement or something like that. So we did have this conversation. We never put anything formal in front of them. We stay in, stay in contact with them around other things, and as we wrap up our park plan, and I have to get off on another topic. But we want to be able to present to them, when they come to us, say we have some money available for a pavilion at Lewis Goguen or something down at the Lions Park, you know, that fits into our overall planning. But they, they seem willing, and I'm excited to get us in a position so that when those things come up, we can finally say, yeah, let's, we have some money.
Okay, I just remembered that discussion.
Good. Andy?
I had a quick internal question. So Neil, you'd mentioned that, because there are two resolutions commending budgets for other things, or were you just saying...
And we would probably add it on to oh eight.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, because we're doing two different things there, and we would just add, you know, another line item there.
Another line item, great.
Oh, resolution oh eight.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so any, so we will take the resolution up at that time or now?
You would probably vote on the award of the proposals now, and then we'll do the funding later.
Funding later, okay. All right, any further questions or discussions? Is there a motion then?
There's already a motion.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, no vote, yeah.
There was no vote. Is there a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close? You're good to go on that one?
Okay, great.
Okay.
And last but not least, is we've had conversations around doing some advertising over here at this key park. And we've gone back and forth to try and really super-standardize it in terms of very specific colors and a very, very prescribed scheme on that. The last time the PRC talked this thing through, we said, you know, we'd really like to, we have some uniformity there in terms of the size of the advertising. And we have some ideas on, once, once we get the okay to go forward with this, to get it marketed. But the general consensus of the PRC is when someone wants to advertise, we would like to be able to have them use their own logos and, you know, within the size constraints that we have. We worked with, we, we got some feedback from one of the local designers, and, you know, that we were bringing in additional people to try and solve this problem here. So what, what we decided to do is ask the council, we have some guidelines that are on the table here. And the PRC recommended that we say, okay, let's take this forward with the council and see if these guidelines that we have, we could approve these or not approve them. We could not advertise at the park, or we could go forward and make it available and, within those size constraints that we have, allow for vendors to purchase the advertising at the park. So what we talked about last time was to get that motion, to get it in front of you, and help us make that decision. And we would like to seek a motion to approve what you have in front of you in terms of those guidelines. And then, and then we would know if we can move forward to start advertising that and go with it, or maybe not do advertising at the park.
There any questions?
Would there be an additional fee for color beyond the two color that you're proposing?
Well, actually, what we, I think it's in these written ones here, that for a while there, we're talking about two colors.
Yeah.
And what we're proposing is say if a, if a vendor has their standard colors on their standard logo, as you look at Super America or Maestris, they use different colors. We would allow them to use their colors, but keep them within the sign, you know, the constraints, you know, to fit in certain areas. We wouldn't have one be, you know, take three or four panels up, or another advertiser would just take up one. But we're going to allow them to use their standard logos that they have.
Is it a fee they pay for the printing? And then they give us an annual fee?
We talked two hundred dollars a year or five hundred dollars for a three-year period, and any costs to create this sign.
Well, I, I think I've made my, my feelings about this clear before, so I will restate them. I think that the, the Lower Village Center area, which is where this is, has a distinct look and feel in its proximity to Gamal Garden. It has, Gamal Garden is part of the, and the Swedish simple design. And as you look at the rest of our buildings around there, I'm not sure it was intentional, but it's the whiteness and the simple lines of the buildings, as well as the court and that whole Lower Village Center area, I think would be, it would be a great distraction and detraction from that, that relationship with the Gamal Garden if we start what I would call sign pollution, with multiple signs of multiple colors around that hockey rink. It, to me, it would create a visual clutter that we just would be against, detract from the, the, that part of the village. We're talking about now, we're talking about looking at what there is about Scandia that makes it unique. And I think Gamal Garden and our Swedish heritage is one of the things that makes us very unique. And doing something that is going, in my mind, that's going to detract from that will not serve us well in the long term as we're looking to create an identity that we hope to market through tourism and in other ways. This is a time cities can control this, and we have an opportunity to control it. I don't know if you remember or know of the, for example, the federal highway, what the federal and state governments have done with us, the Federal Highway Beautification Act of nineteen sixty-five, that put very dramatically decreased the number of billboards along federal highways that had become, because they were for advertising, for business. And created quite a bit of attracting the visual clutter there. I have no idea if that's me. Sorry?
I think the more constraints that you put on people, the less you're going to have advertising. They want to put their logo out there and their name out there.
I would appreciate being able to just finish, Bob, and then I'll come to you, okay, if that's all right? I'll give you a chance to speak. I think that there have been other bills, highway bills, that for the same thing, that this is an opportunity for, we as a, as a community have the opportunity to control the visual impact of, of the community. I think that the money that we will get from this is not, in my mind, worth, and especially at this point in time when we are in some ways better off financially than we have been because of the bonding that we've done on the roads and the way that that has been worked, I don't think, see that this is a time that we should be selling, commercializing an area of the city that has not been commercialized up to this point. The, rather, we should be thinking about how we can enhance that aspect of the city. How we can build on what we have here and not detract from it or distract from it. So that is my feeling about this. I was hoping maybe something could become up, I could compromise in some way with a design on the signs, but, I mean, that's not going to happen. So I just don't, I really, I really think we'll be doing a disservice to the community and to our, what we have set for ourselves as a goal in terms of our identity as a, as a, as a community with, and our Swedish heritage and small town. So that's my feelings. Now, Bob, you'd like to say something?
I mean, these are hardly billboards. We don't have a lot of traffic going around. The fact of the matter is that we're trying to start a program that changes every year. They have to renew it every year. We can change it whenever we want. At the end of the year, we can put all the constraints we want on it. The opinion, and from my perspective, is let's get it going. Let's give people a chance to come in and do something now. We have a very small population that actually sees those. So any, any local business that wants to put their name up there, I think is just a benefit for the rink itself, because that area is used primarily by hockey players and kids.
And one of the considerations, too, if you look at other hockey rinks or if you're watching the Scandia playoffs, that advertising is...
It's consistent. Every place they go and play, it's the same thing. I went to the Lumber Yard, I've been, you know, every hockey rink in the area with my grandchildren, and they're all the same.
But we're not all the others. We are Scandia, Lower Village, Gamal Garden Museum, with our history. We don't, because others do it, we do not have to do it. Jim, you want to say something?
I, you know, the PRC worked on this a long time. I've been sitting in on meetings with those folks, talking about this for a long time. And again, it's just going to be seen by people around. You're not going to see it when you drive by or anything. I, I, I do not want to put any constraints on it, and if a business in its town wants to advertise them all for it. And I guess that would be the lowest impact advertising I could think is the inside of the hockey rink boards. I, I don't have a problem with it whatsoever.
Jim, Steve, would you like to say?
I guess I liked it a little bit better with the proposal was two color. And I know there was some discussion at one point of maybe limiting which sides of the rink would have it, so that you wouldn't see it from the road. So we'd put the signs on the west... west side, and the north or south, maybe, but not on the east side of it.
And I can verify that point, we would initially fill the west side, so since most people that come to, the spectators, or, you know, that watch the hockey, the guys getting up there, the people that aren't playing, they'll see, we'll fill up the west side first. And then, yeah, yeah, there were, there's enough space that as, you know, those grow, and those spaces are taken, we can work our way around the rink, and then they would eventually be to the east side, a little more visible from the road.
You'd need some real good eyes to be able to focus on any one of those driving by in your car.
That's why I say a little more.
I think in the spirit of compromise, that if we said, let's not put the seventeen on the east side, I think that might be a good start. Because I drive it, pass it every day, and I might not recognize which advertiser it is, but I'm not going to see it as nice, clean, white, I'm going to see a bunch of stuff.
You do see it, yeah. Chris, you'd like to say something?
No, I frankly don't care much either way, I don't see where it's going to bring a lot of money in, but on the other hand, you know, if it's a start, we're trying something.
It's trying to make it easier to let them sell more. The more constraints we put on it, the less they're going to sell.
You won't see it driving by.
Okay, wait, let's, okay, you don't think, I think you would see it driving by, driving down the hill, you see it.
Yep.
If it's on that side, but.
I think the idea about not filling those on the east side, driving down the hill, we could probably even extend that idea to the south side, so that coming down the hill, you can see them that way, too. We could just prescribe that, you know, that we fill them by the west side first, and then on, on the north, and see what kind of business we actually can draw them up to.
I'd space them all the way around. Get people excited about filling a hole.
You start with the west side, if they, if they, if they get, you don't even know if you're going to get any yet.
Exactly.
Well, they've already done a lot of work to go out and acquire.
Oh, I know, I know, they've been working a long time.
And all of a sudden, it's for us to start throwing constraints.
It's not all of a sudden, I've, I've talked about it quite a while ago. They have been aware of, of the concerns that I had.
You have, but the council hasn't.
But they are, it's not that they are hearing a, concerns about it for the first time. Part of the council, that being me, has spoken that concern.
So what does the committee want to do?
Well, the committee was more of the like-minded, saying that we would like to support, you know, those logos from those vendors, with their standard colors, and again, keeping the point about the size constraints, and we could make some adjustments to locations and stuff like that. But we have worked with this, we've tried to get some additional help from, from one of the local designers, and, and getting that help, kind of for free, is difficult to do sometimes, and we've gone back and forth, and haven't been able to do that. And that's where we said, you know, what do we really want here? We look, consider what we see on other hockey rinks, that would probably be consistent. And so that's what we said.
Is this just a hockey rink?
In the summer months, of course, it's a skate park.
It's a skate park.
And is it, in the winter, it's just, it's not pleasure skating, it's just hockey?
Well, it.
It was a pleasure rink next to the hockey rink.
Unorganized play, where kids are out there.
So it is.
Adults are out there scootering around, and playing, of course. But they're, you know, they're not, there's not organized, there may be organizations, I'm not aware of it, but that hockey rink does seem busy. And of course, when we have the events, like Venture Fest, and that very successful Scandica tournament, that's where you can get more eyes on something like that. But to your question about what does the PRC want to do, and what do you have, is what we wanted to do is in front of you now, let's take these and move forward with it. And, you know, we've had this one, it's been on our PRC agenda, I think, for about 13 months, so we'd really like to get some promotion on it. And that's why I said, we need your help, and if it's something that we want to leave it as it is, that's great, and if we want to move forward, that's great, too. Obviously, we'll go with whatever the council, however the council would advise us, if I hear a vote.
Is there a motion?
I move that we approved the recommended guidelines, but I'd like to see it kept on that west side for now, see what happens over there.
Come back if it, after it takes off, and get approval.
Yeah, if it does at all, you know, that, that's my motion.
So we'll limit it to 20, is what you're saying?
Is that what the, how many boards are?
Twenty on the west side.
Yeah. Yeah, because all the people that are watching those games, those are the people that, that local businesses want to look at their name, what are we going to do after the game? Yeah. Yep.
If it takes off, then come back and.
Yeah, yeah, we'll talk about that later, you know.
And we'll have a chance to see it, and know whether we want to.
Is there a second?
Just a second, Dad.
Any further discussion? I am still in opposition, for all the reasons I gave, but. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Aye. Okay. It has passed, and you, and then we will, this we don't have to deal with later, do we?
Well, that's it.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, Terry. All right, that brings us to the Planning Commission, then, Sherry.
All right, the first one is a request from Connie Sutton of Amtech Designs, for an amendment to their existing conditional use permit, for their business in the industrial park district. They have had this CUP since 1995, they have amended it a few times. Last time was in 2015, when they asked to do something similar to this, but didn't do it, and so their approval ran out. They're back with a modified plan, that is a slightly bigger building, and also moving an accessory building to a new location. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on this at their last meeting, they found, like I did, that it meets the criteria for granting the conditional use permit amendment. We had no one testify or give comments at the meeting, and so the Planning Commission said that they recommend to you to approve this, partly because our cop plan encourages business expansion, and this is a way to help local businesses expand.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments?
I'm glad to see it, I'm glad to see you're expanding your business, and I'm, you know, it's, it's very, this is the place to do it, and this is a lot to do it on, and I'm, I'm very happy, I'm all for it.
Okay, any other comments?
This is good.
Is there a motion?
I move to, to approve this amendment to the CUP for Amtech.
Second.
Okay, further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
And that brings us up to ordinance 198, to amend chapter five of the Development Code. Sherry?
All right, so the Planning Commission has been working on the Shoreland Ordinance for about a year. They have recommended an ordinance to you, we have sent that to the DNR for the required 30-day review period. They brought some comments back, mostly pretty minor comments, gave you a conditional approval, assuming that you would make the changes they suggested, and we have done that. We've had one issue come up from the Carnealian watershed district, that I will mention to in a minute here, that is a decision point for tonight, if you want to move forward with the ordinance. Some of the key things that this ordinance would do is it would expand the list of waters that are regulated by shoreline rules in the city. The current ordinance does not regulate all the public waters in the city, and the Planning Commission, based on the goals in the cop plan to protect the water resources in the city, is recommending that we treat them all equitably, and that we would consider them all shoreline. It would require some wetland setbacks, changing your current flat 75-foot setback to one that is based on the quality of the wetlands. And then, we have included PUDs in this ordinance, in the last ordinance, you allowed open space developments as PUDs in shoreline, but not other kinds of residential PUDs. And so this would expand that, and allow all kinds, other kinds of residential PUDs. The DNR is continuing to give you some flexibility in this ordinance, partly because they feel like you're doing a good job of protecting the resource here, so they're continuing to let you have a higher maximum building height than they allow in their model ordinance. And they are very happy that you're having somewhat larger lot size, and width requirements, and some larger setbacks in your ordinance, than the minimum standards that they require in their model ordinance. With that, the one item for discussion tonight is the wetland setback requirements. We got a letter from the Carmer last week on this, after the Planning Commission had heard about it. And they submitted comments about the wetland buffers, saying, you know, your idea for the setbacks isn't exactly like our wetland buffers. So it might be better not to reference our rules in your ordinance, because they're really not consistent. And we looked at that, and they're absolutely right. I mean, there are things they allow, like buffer averaging. Typically, we don't allow averaging for setbacks. Typically, setbacks are designed to make them somewhat common in a neighborhood, and we can't allow an averaging of the setback requirement for septic systems, because that's a county requirement. So probably leaving out the reference to their rules, and this notion of averaging, and some other things they allow, is a good thing. There also are slightly different categories between the watershed districts and the Bowser categories. Bowser are the guys who have recommended wetland buffers to everyone. They have a set, a set of categories and names for them. The Comfort Lake, Forest Lake people adopted the Bowser names, and the requirements pretty much verbatim. Carmer got more creative, and they shifted the names one class. So they don't have a preserved class, their top class is manage one. So that is another reason not to reference the watershed standards, but instead to reference the Bowser standard. So we're using a common standard, and also so that it coordinates with the method that is used for determining what the classification is. The statewide process for that is called MinRAM, the Minnesota Rapid Assessment Method, and it has the same classifications that Bowser uses. And so since we're requiring people to use that when they do a wetland delineation, it probably makes the most sense to use the Bowser classes as well. And so the recommendation from staff, since we didn't get to talk to the Planning Commission about this, is that we use the Bowser nomenclature and categories. In terms of the size of the setbacks, they're, they're all pretty similar among the three uses, and they're reflected in there. The, the one downer for going to this method of using the variable width for setbacks, is that if someone can't get a wetland delineation done in the middle of winter, they have to wait till they can get a delineation done, which we've experienced before, when we've had applications in the winter, and we make them contingent on getting a wetland delineation, so that we can determine where that boundary is. So Neil and I didn't see that as a huge drawback for going to this variable.
Yeah, especially where it's close, I mean, sometimes, you know, you can go out there, and it's, you know, it's very, very obvious, it's not going to have that impact. Other times where it's really close, we've held people off.
Yeah. And the other way to deal with something like that is to have a default, that if somebody didn't want to wait, we could say, you can accept a 75-foot setback, which is the, one of the top categories. I don't know if you guys would find that interesting, but that would be an option for someone who didn't want to wait till the end of winter.
But I think as drafted here, it reflects kind of what the discussion was at the council, and then through the Planning Commission, is that, you know, you can go down for what's called a managed three wetland, down to a 25-foot setback. The other thing in here, you know, when we talked about, you know, de minimis, where you're having a small impact, those provisions are in here, too, in terms of encroachment onto the setback.
Yeah.
Can anybody tell me what a managed two, or a managed three wetland is?
It's, there are very detailed descriptions in the Bowser rules, and that are used when people do MinRAM. It all has to do with things like the vegetation quality, the size of the wetland, its relationships to other wetlands, whether it provides other, there's other good habitat nearby, there's a whole set of criteria they use to evaluate the quality, and a lot of it hinges on, on the quality of the vegetation. So, anyone who was doing this, the wetland delineators are familiar with MinRAM, and once they finish the delineation, then they would be looking at those classifications that Bowser has established for MinRAM, and deciding which classification the wetland falls.
Are we required to have the county do our delineations, or can you get a private delineator?
Oh, you can get a private delineator, most people do get a private delineator.
You know, where we have the, the county, the conservation district do it, it's if somebody has a plan, and, you know, a lot of this is even, you know, before, to see if they need a variance, you know, where are you looking? And he'll go out and stake, like, rough boundaries, very conservatively, and if we can say, you're, you know, what, it used to be 75 feet back from there, you're good to go, build it there.
Right.
But if it's, you know, if it's getting really close, then we always insist on a delineation.
Yeah. He does what he calls a determination.
Sure.
Which isn't really a delineation, but it, it gets close, and if somebody's 200 feet beyond it, then it's enough usually, though.
Yep, all right.
So if you guys are okay with the staff recommendations, then this one is ready for you to adopt.
I, I do have one question, on the table 14, 4.13, or item 4.13. How long do we keep a formerly name of a, of a lake on there?
Until it officially changes.
I think it's officially changed.
And if you'd rather, we can take it off.
Take it off? I would, I think we should rather, it's no longer that.
The DNR, what we've done is use what DNR has in their model, and a lot of times, they keep the old, old names around.
Probably, I mean, if you look at it, that, between, if you're going to do it, you'd probably put formerly Halfbreed or Sylvan.
Sylvan, yes.
And keep it there, because map, until maps are, it's probably going to take 10 years before everything changes.
Yeah, I mean, even if it's already officially approved, it's going to take forever for it to work its way out.
Yeah, I think that's why the DNR keeps it around, is it still appears on maps, but if you want it to be gone, we can just take it off.
I'd feel more comfortable with it gone.
Right, we'll take it off.
If we had formerly Sylvan?
That would be better.
I just don't know.
Because most maps have it as Sylvan.
As Sylvan, right, that one, that name is long gone.
Right, we'll take it off.
I think you found some really good compromises on the setback stuff.
Yeah, I think it's a, a good ordinance, too, and you got some cats on the back.
So then, we've got a resolution regarding this?
First of all, you need to act on the ordinance, and then the resolution, which we are to summary publication.
So ordinance.
198. I would like to make a motion to approve ordinance 198, to amend chapter five of the Development Code, Shoreland Management Regulations.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Do we want to add, include the, the Bowser regulations, not the watershed, or their designations?
That's.
It's not what you got in here, the only change is the one you just made.
Okay, so do we need to put that change in there?
Yeah, just say, as.
As amended.
Amended.
As amended.
Okay, and we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None?
Thank you, Sherry.
Okay, for the resolution?
Yep.
Motion for the resolution to summary publication.
Okay, I would move resolution oh five fifteen eighteen oh four, approving summary publication of ordinance 198.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much, Sherry.
Great, it's done.
Yeah, it's about time.
That was a biggie.
It's been over a year.
Yeah.
Yeah. Lots of moving parts to that one.
It's a long gestation period for shoreline ordinance.
Yeah, nicely done. Okay, and that brings us up to resolution authorizing the release of the comprehensive plan update for the City of Scandia. And Jane, I think we're, turn it over to you.
I'll make my vote. Hopefully, um, so, just to give you a brief background of this, and I know that every 10 years, the Metropolitan Council, the Corps of Land Use, is going to be updating its comprehensive plan, and so that is a cycle we are in now. We've been working on this project for about a year and a half, and we are very near the end. So just to give you some idea of what a comprehensive plan is, I'll just go through this very quickly. It is a framework and a vision for the community, in a 20 to 30-year timeframe. It identifies goals and policies for the physical development of the city, it's a way to guide stakeholders, all stakeholders, both the city and private developers in making land use decisions, and it's also a legal document, in that it provides you legal basis for zoning. The chapters in the comprehensive plan are listed here, so we have an introduction, which taught, basically gives us some overarching vision and goals, and a background, history of the community, some demographic information. Land use, which is often what we think of as a comprehensive plan, this includes, this has some very prescribed elements or pieces by the Metropolitan Council, but this is also the chapter that we talk about the future land use categories, and the future land use for the city. Natural resources is, it can be, sometimes it's rolled into the land use category, in this case, we chose to split it out as its own chapter, and this really covers some required elements from the comprehensive plan, including aggregate resources and significant areas. Resilience is kind of a new name for a chapter. Again, this was often rolled into the land use, and in this particular chapter, we really are just discussing solar, solar energy and solar resources, and this is a required element of the comprehensive plan. Economic competitiveness is also required. It basically needs to include a description, and what we provided is some background information, historical employment information, as well as the required goals and objectives. Housing is a very important chapter, I think one that's gonna be looked very closely this year. And in our, in Scandia's case, we were talking mostly about existing home and projected needs. And then the final, have to do more with the physical resources of the city, so we have parks and trails, transportation, water resources, and last but not least, an implementation plan. As I mentioned, we've been at this about a year and a half, and this lists some public, what we've done in terms of public engagement. We started with a website that went up in January of 2017, and that was followed very closely by a first pop-up meeting at Venture Fest. We had a second at Taco Days, and we also had three focus groups where we talked specifically to groups of fifth and, a group of fifth and sixth graders. We had a business and agricultural group, and then a 55-plus group. Then we also had three steering committee meetings, and the steering committee was instrumental in establishing the vision, the goals and the objectives. We did a community-wide survey, as you might recall, during the summer of 2017. There was city council workshop, an open house, as well as planning commission discussions on the draft plan from January through April. And the last thing we had was a planning commission meeting, public hearing on the plan on May 1st. So through the process of our public engagement, and with especially with the surveys and the focus groups, we were able to identify some common themes, and we identified strengths, weaknesses, and then also priorities for the future. This word cloud was actually part of, developed as part of the surveys we did at the pop-up meeting, and I think what you can see is what stands out in that rural category, and that was a conservative strength. The weaknesses had to do with internet service, transportation, aging population, and a lack of younger families. Priorities for the future were ag preservation, residential, commercial growth, trails, and then life stage holding. So as we began to write the plan and develop the plan, these are the kinds of things we tried to keep in mind. So what I want to go through now is just what's new in the plan. We started with, as a base, with the original plan, and then just tried to adjust and make changes as we went. The community designation in Scandia is a designation identified by the Metropolitan Council, and these are intended to guide growth and development, establish expectations and densities and development patterns. Scandia is currently designated as a diversified rural community. However, through discussions with the planning commission, the steering committee, and other groups, it was determined that perhaps some portions of Scandia should be included as rural centers. So the two rural centers you see are the area that would be just kind of around the existing village neighborhood or village center, and then also around on the east side or west side of Big Marine Lake. There's one, and there's one here. I'll talk a little bit more about those as we go. So to give you an idea of what the differences are, diversified rural was really an area intended to protect land from rural lifestyles and agricultural preservation, and until urbanization or long-range development would occur. So essentially, it's intended to preserve ag areas until potential urban services are available. So you'll see a large variety of farm and non-farm land uses, usually large areas of natural resources, and a lot of prime agricultural soils. Rural centers, on the other hand, tend to be those areas that typically serve rural areas. You would often think of them, for example, as, you know, like the St. Bonifatius, or Norwegian America, or Scandia, originally the Village of Scandia was a rural center serving its region. Often surrounded by agricultural land, usually have a mix of densities. Some have wastewater treatment services, others may not. As we establish these, what we try to do is make sure, as we go through the plan, the occurring theme is that in order for densities to increase in these areas, there does need to be some sort of either public sewer or expansion of the community system. The impact of these changes is first of all in density, in the diverse, when you have a rural area, rural areas, and again, these density ranges are defined by the Metropolitan Council, so rural areas such as a diversified rural have a maximum density of four units per 40 acres, while rural centers and more urbanized areas such as suburban, energy, emerging, or even the urban areas, they have a minimum density. In this case, for a rural center, it's three to five units per acre. Again, keep in mind to meet those densities, there has to be some sort of either expansion of public sewer or some sort of community system. Density is an average measured throughout the community. In this case, since we have pockets of rural center, we would measure the density in that entire rural center, and diversified rural, we would measure density in that area as an average. The reason it's an average is that this allows you to have places where you may have lower densities, and you may have some higher densities. What comprehensive plan must show is that there is available land to meet the forecasted growth at the expected densities. Right now, and you also should be aware that density expectations apply to new growth or development, so moving forward, we would want, any new growth, we want to meet that. Right now, the existing net density in Scandia is 3.6 units per 40 acres, so well within that 40, four per 40. What the comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance recognize again is that any increase in those densities may not occur without municipal or some sort of communities or... Any questions about that? So as we were moving forward and looking at what should the land use, future land use be, we have, we developed this map, which is development constraints. So the area that you see here that's kind of orange are areas that are essentially undeveloped, so they're either wetlands, lakes, steep slopes, might not have a lot of steep slopes, and even some exist, existing development. The yellow or the light yellow area is prime agricultural land, and then the white is essentially what we consider developable. Agricultural land is included in the developable calculation, but we just wanted to show you where that was, so you could have an idea of how it fits in with the land use plan map. So this is the future land use plan map. It was revised slightly after the planning commission meeting. It's actually very similar to what is in the current comprehensive plan in terms of especially the general rural area and the agricultural core. Major differences are the expansion of the village neighborhood in the center of the city, around the existing village, and also the expansion or the addition of that village neighborhood on the west side of Big Marine Lake. Any questions about that? Here you can, this table identifies just kind of how those future land uses are broken up. Agricultural core and general rural still make up the greatest percentage, that's almost 60, over 67% of the area. Another, the second category is open water, which is at 13%. Village neighborhood is at 5.6%, while the village mixed use is just over 1%. And then the next area is St. Croix River District, which is at 3%. That's the area which is along the St. Croix. The mining that you see is essentially the existing mining area to the, on the west side of the city.
Be the boundaries of the tiller property.
Thank you. So that, and that is all that area includes. These are the forecasts that were distributed by the Metropolitan Council. These are actually done and distributed to communities as part of the systems statements that come out in this case about 2015. The forecasts are showing some moderate growth in the city. By 2040, the city is expected to add another 582 households. As I mentioned, it's important that our plan show we can accommodate that growth, just based on current densities and available developable land. The city would actually have available land for about 1,400 units, so we're well within This is a table that kind of shows how we prove to the Met Council that we have enough land to meet those population and employment forecasts. And how this works is we've identified how much, each of the land use categories, and then the desired distribution is based on where we think development is most likely to occur. So we assume 5% of any new development would be in the agricultural core area, while 20% in general rural, 5% in the St. Croix River area, and the bulk of development, 65% would occur in the village neighborhood areas, which includes both the center area and the area west of Big Marine Lake, and then village mixed use would have another 5%. We apply that, we take that percentage and apply that to the 582 new households, and that's how we get the number of units. Then the acres needed are based on the number of units we need times the density, so in most cases it was .1. So you can see how much acreage is needed, about 2,700 acres, and as I mentioned, Scandia currently has about 14,000 acres to be developed. Do the same kind of calculation for jobs. The difference is that instead of units per acre, it's a floor area, it's a kind of a complicated, you kind of have to back into the number, but you get there. And you can see there's more than enough acres. We need about 17 acres to meet the job criteria, and we come to, we have enough for 205 acres. And they said, this is how we can show the Met Council we have the land available to meet those projections. The next table, which is the staging table, builds off of this. This is actually table 2, 2-0, or 2-0 in the plan. One thing I wanted to add about the last table, the reality is, you know, we're just sort of making some assumptions here. The reality of development is that it will be a mix of configurations through the city, determined primarily by market forces and desire. None of these densities or these calculations preclude cluster development and conservation development. We didn't build those into the calculations because those are done on a site-by-site basis, and it would be very difficult to say where that's going to be. The staging plan, we basically applied very much the same kind of calculations. We know how much developable acres we have in each category. We've made the assumption that some land, that there will be development in each 10-year increment, so by 2020, 2030, and then 2040, there will be some development. In the case of Scandia, we've made the assumption that it will be fairly, distributed fairly evenly across those 10-year periods. These numbers are based on forecasted growth. I've included an, sort of an example of how it's calculated. So for example, in the agricultural core, we expect 5% of the growth to occur there, so we know that's 29 units. We take that 29 and divide it by three, which is each of our increments, and so we know we're gonna get between nine and 10 units per decade. And then at nine units times the density, we know we'll have about 90 acres in the first stage, and so on through the thing, and we've applied that all the way down the line. Again, the reality, it'll happen where it happens, based on market forces, what, you know, personal preferences, who's willing to sell, and what the city is willing to approve. This table is not intended to force growth or to limit growth. It is simply intended to say, here's kind of a way we can think it happens. It's much more important in areas where sewer and water need to be expanded, because then you need to plant capacity of those systems and extending the pipes, and you can give it a little different situation.
Jane, I am gonna ask a question here, because that's not in my questions to ask later. But that, when I look at that village neighborhood, and in 2020, we're talking about 120 units, that's in two years. Is that what that means?
Mm-hmm.
That we would increase by 120 units in two years?
Right, 120 units would take up 300 acres.
I think in perspective, that's probably, you know, splitting it in thirds may not been the best approach there, because if you look at, some of that village neighborhood is that area west of Big Marine, and probably the bulk of that probably should have been shifted out to that 2030 to 2040 range, you know, knowing that that connection's going to happen, you know, if it happens, it's gonna happen later on.
Right, and that can be adjusted. And this development density is still at the two and a half units per, or one unit per two and a half acreage. So we have a, maybe assumption that there's any public sewer there yet.
It just kind of begs the question that two years to look at that number is just a little...
It's just, those are, you know, we just.
Adjust, adjust, adjust a bit. Just move it out a little bit, I think.
But I think we have to, we have to assume there will be some development in every decade. We can't go 0-0.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I think you also, on the previous slide, it's, when you look at the village neighborhood, 65% of the desired distribution is there, but it looks as though you need to consume almost all of the, of currently available acres in order to hit that target. And do we, the way that area is divided up, are you sure that, you know, and the bulk of that up in the village center area are three or four property owners? Are we confident that all of those property owners are gonna totally develop their property?
Well, again, it's, you know, we know that it's based on markets, availability of land, unwillingness of sellers.
This almost seems to be saying this, it is possible to do it, and this is what, why it's possible. This is what it looks like.
It's possible if we use everything we've got.
It's more of a definitive.
So it's more, but...
Definitive.
Than definitive, yeah. So that we're sort of, in a sense, playing to the requirements of the Metropolitan Council. They're saying, "Show us it's possible," and we've shown them.
Okay.
You know, again, we can't predict who will want to sell or not want to sell.
Or put in sewer.
We may think we know, but you don't always know, and so it's really more of just saying, this is, this is how it could happen.
Okay.
Okay, so that's the staging plan. The new chapter that I mentioned includes natural resources, resilience, and economic competitiveness. While we've added, we've split these out from the land use chapter the way they were in the last plan, there are really not a lot of new information. They were most intended to meet the minimum criteria from the, of the Metropolitan Council. We had a lot of discussion at the planning commission about identifying aggregate resources that is required on the land use plan map, so if you look closely on the map, you'll see these kind of crosshatched areas. Doesn't mean there's going to be mining there, it just means we have to show where those are. The city zoning is still controlled.
And just a comment too about the resilience. You had said earlier in an earlier slide that that was just solar, but it isn't just solar. It's also this sustainability quality of, that we've best management practices that we're working toward with Green Step City.
Housing, as I mentioned, is a pretty important chapter. This includes goals and objectives, a discussion of existing housing, as well as housing needs and the implementation plan. Scandia does not have an affordable housing allocation, so, you know, we didn't need to worry about that. What we did try to focus on in this chapter is on what was identified by the community on those housing gaps, and then in terms of the implementation, how we can address those types of gaps. So this is the housing implementation plan. Again, just provides a variety of tools or programs that can be used to meet housing needs and who some of those partners will be and may be in that. Again, it does not wire the city or anybody to use the tool, it just says here's available tools. tool. I think the things a city would be focusing on would be things like the ordinance development, for example, the accessory dwelling units, which the city already has an ordinance, but, you know, we just kind of know that the city would continue to support that. And also, any city ordinances. The implementation plan is review what's out there and identify potential opportunities for cluster development or regulations that might inhibit housing priorities. Parks, the parks plan had very little change from the last one. We've mostly updated this, identifying the regional trail considerations, and we use this opportunity to highlight connections to the Gateway Trail, the Hardwood Creek Trail, and the Swedish Immigrant Trail. And then there's also a section in the parks ordinance about local parks. So we've identified all of the existing local facilities. There was some discussion when we went through the steering committee and had a couple of the different open houses, and internally, should we be identifying parks' gaps or places that parks might need? And there just didn't really seem to be an interest in that. You know, we even would ask the question in a couple of our pop-up meetings or open houses, and nobody really had any issues. So we did not include that. Transportation plan also, again, very similar, not a lot to change in that. What we did identify are the areas of the city where there are gaps in the system that may want to be addressed as development occurs. What you can see is we just sort of showed kind of circles or kind of an area. What we didn't want to do is put an alignment in there. Sometimes people, even though it's just a line on the map, people may have a little baby to that line on the map, so we just wanted to say, here's a gap.
Yeah, I like, I like the way you did that this time. It was different than what was done last time.
Right.
I think makes a lot of sense.
And that happens in every plan. Your intentions are good, we want to go from here to here, but sometimes people think that means I'm going exactly in that way.
Right.
So this is just to say, now, here's a gap, and here's, when, if, if and when development occurs in this area, we want to think about how we're going to address that. Wastewater, surface water, water supply, very technical chapters. The wastewater system identifies the limitations of the existing public and private systems. This is also the area where we talk at a very high level about the possibility of extending, of expanding sewer to that area on the west side of Big Marine Lake. And I know, I mean, some of you probably have heard this when we went through the planning commission, but how, what the idea potentially is, is to expand it from Forest Lake. The Met Council will sometimes allow what they call an express line for the sewer, which means it's got very limited connections. You know, we've identified the area in Forest Lake where it would be best to kind of start that extension and work with the cities would need to work together to create an agreement, identify how many, how many connections Forest Lake might have, how many connections Scandia would have, and, you know, it would be, as I said, very limited. One of the reasons for that is there's an area, a rural area, just west, or just west of Big Marine Lake and Scandia, that is showing up as pretty rural and agricultural in the Forest Lake Plan, and they're not quite ready to give that up yet. So the express sewer would allow that to happen. Again, this is a long-range plan, but what this allows us to do is start thinking about that. As development is occurring in Forest Lake, we need to start looking at sizing of that pipe, running and...
We've had a conversation, you know, with the Met Council, so kind of worked to how they would want to see the plan. Sets up the possibility for you guys to have that option if that's something that the city goes down that pathway, or you simply could have just an expanded bliss system or a new bliss system in the same area too. So just allows more flexibility in the future. You just never know what development you could entertain, with the cost share on something like this, or, you know, to meet permit requirements, you know, it's just another option. When we say expressway, basically you would have a forest main going several miles and get to some proximity of the sewer grid, say, for say, you got the Met Council that runs down the west side of sixty-one, north and south, and Forest Lake's the very end of it, goes all the way down to St. Paul. So as a lateral off that line is expanded eastward for the Forest Lake system, you would basically tap into one of those manholes. Probably have a proper agreement. If that was, you know, ever done, you'd have a proper agreement, basically you're allowed this much flow, right? And that's calculated within the area of the, the new area that's been kind of outlined on the west side of Big Marine Lake. Very similar to what Columbus does with Forest Lake. So Columbus pumps through Forest Lake system on the west side, so it's all separately metered, so everyone pays their shares, so.
Who would give the permission for that Met Council at Forest Lake to do that? Would you have to, you'd have to get both?
Yeah.
But this at least gives us the option to look at.
Well, yeah, we need to take a good look at that.
Yeah, I mean, whether we do it or not, it's moot, but without doing this, we really can't even look at that as an option.
Right.
The surface water plan, there's been a very detailed local surface water management plan prepared that has been submitted to the watershed, you know, watershed district. This, what's in this plan summarizes that, and we've included, or will include at the final publication, the local surface water management plan and the appendix to that. And water supply, again, is more of a summary of local water supply. The implementation plan is generally the last chapter. In many cases, it's sort of been a kind of a, you know, an on-throwaway chapter, but I think this time around, we really tried to give this some teeth. It includes a listing of the official controls, such as the zoning ordinance and subdivision ordinance. Talks about how you amend the comprehensive plan, but I think what's different here is the action plan worksheets. And these are sort of, provide specific action steps by chapters and by goals. Planning commission went through all of these and identified these very specific action steps. So these are included as an appendancy of an appendix. These are intended to be updated more often than the plans, so depending on how you cycle through, the action steps are as they complete. The city, the planning commission, the council may want to look at these every couple of years, just to keep, kind of keep them more current.
Do you need a plan amendment if you change these?
Pardon?
Would you need a plan amendment if you change these?
I think in the plan, we said no, that you did not need a plan amendment. We wanted to set it up and make it easier to do that. It's just we reference them and say, these will continue to happen. If you wanted to change the goals or something, you would need an amendment, but not, not the specific action steps. So, the next steps. Council moves forward tonight. The resolution you have before you is to basically authorize that we submit the plan for adjacent and affected community review. These adjacent and affected communities include any community that's adjacent to the city, school districts, watershed districts, DNR, MINDA will be in that, and a variety of other sources. These communities or jurisdictions have six months to review the plan, so we have to either wait the full six months or until we receive comments from everybody, whichever comes first. Any comments that come through, we need to address in the plan or respond to them. And then at that point, we'll be back at the council asking for a resolution authorizing the submission of the plan to the Metropolitan Council. And this is the council approval process. They have about a hundred and twenty days to review it and bring it through their land use committee, and then finally, the full Met Council. And any comments they have as it relates to regional system, we would need to address. We expect to be, have it ready to be submitted to the council by December, the end of December of 2018, which is right now the deadline. Once the Met Council approves that, then the next phase of the planning process begins, and that's where the city would start looking at some of the zoning and some of the ordinances. Specifically, we want to make sure that they are in compliance with the comprehensive So with that, I will just try to answer any questions right now.
Questions, comments?
Really, all we're doing tonight is saying that we want to allow other agencies to review and comment on this before we actually act and approve, which won't happen until sometime next year?
Well, we, when do, does our approval happen, tonight or next?
Sort of a conditional approval, a provisional approval. I think we want the plan to be in...
To reflect what we want.
Basically, your final draft.
Right.
Knowing that if, for example, we get a comment from the watershed district that is very similar to like the Shoreline Ord, they sent in a comment, we might need to make some minor changes or something to do to address those comments.
Okay. So I have a few. I do, a lot of them have been taken care of already. And I will, does somebody else want to go, other people? Well, maybe I'll start, and then you can go on. I think that we need, we have said we wanted this to be a reference document, to be used, not to sit on a shelf, but something to actually be used. So with that in mind, I think we need to be, we want it to be as clear as possible, as accurate as possible, and as easy to use as possible. I think that Jane and crew have done a great job. It's a very complex process, as you, we all can see, and they've done, I think, a really masterful job of capturing the input that they've gotten from the community and from the, the various, through both of the pop-ups, through the surveys, through the focus groups that they've had, it's been done really well. So I thank you for that. So I do have a couple of questions, though. And for, the first is on page six, you want to flip this up, when it talks about the steering committee and your use of the terminology to engage traditionally underrepresented communities. And I think what you meant, mean by that is that we had the youth involved and we had seniors involved. Is that right, Jane? Is that the idea? I would, I think people looking at that, the way that that is, that terminology is used, is often used in terms of looking at ethnically or racially underrepresented communities, and I, so I think that's somewhat misleading when we look at this. And I would rather we, it said something about engage, to overall comprehensive process to engage the full spectrum of the community from youth to seniors. To me, that would be clear to people that that's in fact what we did. Otherwise, if they look at this, they don't know that's what we did. Now, I don't know, how, how we want to do this with my comments? Do we want to discuss each one, or?
Well, we have to approve it tonight, then I would think we need to work through your comments.
Okay.
I think the thing is just see if there are any objections to that.
Okay, rather than making a motion for...
Yeah, if there's something that there's kind, you know, controversial, try to get a consensus and just move on.
So is that, does anyone have any objection to that? To change that wording from engage traditionally underrepresented communities to engage the full spectrum of the community from youth to seniors?
I don't have a problem with it.
All right, so hearing none, then we can change. I will just say this, just as a comment on page eight, about the mining. I've actually looked this up, and so I think it's not an issue, but I know people are concerned about, will we ever have frac mining here? I think in the research that I've done, it's very unlikely, Washington County, there are actually articles about it. It's kind of, it's not going to happen, knock on wood, for a variety of reasons. So I'm not, I'm, I'm okay with not saying anything about it, otherwise I would have wanted us to put, ask that we put something in there.
Well, now, this comp plan is a guidance document, too.
Correct.
Not law, I mean, we can...
Correct.
There are certain things we can't stop.
Right, right. But we can point ourselves in a direction of what we support, which is what it is. The next is, well, I think, the density statement, I think I've had, that was one question I had with, in the rural center area. I think you've answered that tonight, as you've described it. My concern was, would landowners be forced to adhere to a three to five units per acre? They could not do something different? And my understanding is that they could do something different. That is just our goal, okay?
If, in that vein, if we went through and developed that whole area as four per forty, would we have a problem with the Met Council saying, because we've designated it rural center?
Well, I think the way, I mean, right now, it's the way it's identified on the proposed of the rural center, so I think ultimately you'd want to amend the zoning ordinance, so this village center, village neighborhood would be carried over to that west area. So at a minimum, you'd be looking at the two and a half acre lots. I think it should require some discussion, because if, in fact, the city chooses to extend or work with extending sewer, you're not going to want it to be at four per forty. You will, in order to pay for that, you need densities, and the council, the council will expect if they're going to extend sewer even to serve that area, that it's going to have to be developed at densities to support that. So my suggestion would be, you know, again, as part of your zoning ordinance updates, look at provisions in the ordinance, so any development that occurs might be sort of a cluster, required to be kind of a cluster development that would eventually allow either further development or connection to a community system.
I think it might not be a bad idea to calculate what the current density is in that area, specifically in that area, and then as we go, make sure we keep an eye on the fact that we want that overall number to be X, and we're at Y today, and if this development's coming in, how does it move that needle? At some point, we need to hit a target. If we don't know which way we're going, we're going to have a problem.
That's an important thing.
Yeah. Is that something that could be part of the action plan, actually, or is it maybe?
It's, I'm sure it's, it's in there somewhat. I think when you review, you know, some of the review of the zoning code to make it consistent with this, we'd take a look at that village neighborhood district and say, how can we, what can we do here to concentrate the growth in this area? So, you know, where you said four per forty, you know, a lot of that right now is zoned for two and a half acre lots as it is, so four per forty wouldn't apply.
I'm saying, if you need three to five per, and you've got one for every two and a half now, are we even close to where we need to be? And if we're not, what is it going to take to get there?
Yeah. I think that's a matter of constant adjustments, though.
Exactly, it is. You know, where are we today? Where's the target? We keep looking at it every time.
And it is covered in the action plan.
Yeah, and every development will come in front of the council, anyway.
That's what we have to watch.
This was not changed, huh?
That actually was on the plan.
Okay, okay, because it's not on this one, but, okay, I won't bring it up then.
Yes, we changed it today.
Then, table two K, I'll just ask this question. It's on page twenty-three. The village, the industrial is not broken out from VMU.
That's because the industrial district is not a specific land use designation, the zoning district, but the land use designation that that's included in is the village mixed use designation.
All right.
And I think that is, if you go to the next page, I think Jane's referenced that there under C.
Village mixed use, okay, I see that. Good. Okay, then I have a question about the terminology and the labeling of the village neighborhood Our whole intent of the village neighborhood, expanding the village neighborhood area within the village, was to concentrate or development around the village center. And when we call the rural, what we've done in the rural commercial neighborhood over by Big Marine Lake, and we're calling that village neighborhood as well, to me, that's confusing, and it doesn't speak... confusing, and it doesn't speak to the whole point of expanding the village neighborhood. And in fact, we're detracting from the village neighborhood by creating a second village neighborhood or a second. So my suggestion is to consider to call that neighborhood a rural commercial neighborhood, because that would better, and it can be described in the same way as the village neighborhood is, but it's identifying it as that neighborhood that's going to grow up around, that we're planning to grow up around, the rural commercial neighborhood on the west side of the city.
Or some type of, type of mixed use, so you can go either way with that.
You could call it rural mixed use.
Right.
Rural mixed use.
Not commercial, commercial doesn't sound right there.
Yeah.
I like the idea of changing the name, because we want to say this is the center.
Yeah.
What you call it, yeah, I think mixed use makes a lot of sense.
Mixed use is good.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, everybody okay with that? Which means we would add another category on here. We'd have to add another number or letter.
Other than adding a paragraph in or around page 24, does that affect a lot of tables?
It would require that we add a new land use category, and then we need to go back, put it on the map, identify it, so you know the tables. I mean, we can do that, it just will take some time to do.
Can you just change the name?
No, because we need to, the tables, the map, and the paragraphs need to align with one another.
This is something the council can do as a zoning amendment later?
Be done as a comprehensive plan amendment later.
It has to be a comprehensive plan amendment.
Okay. Can you call it village center and mixed juice areas? And then that, we're talking about there's two different areas under one name?
Which is what we do now, we call it a village neighborhood area.
And a second village.
On page 24, instead of C saying village center mixed juice, can I say village center and mixed juiced areas and leave everything else alone?
Yeah, we could do that, that would still require that we go back and adjust the tables.
If they have to adjust it, I think it would be more accurate to just call that a village mixed use over there.
I'm just trying to simplify it and not spend a lot of time and money doing it if we can help it.
If you put it on the map as a separate area, then that council will require it to be identified as a separate category and on the table, so.
Well, it's...
We have, I know I've read people comment that it's kind of goofy that we call that the village center when this is the village center.
Right.
And what's that going to do to our identity?
I mean, the whole, the way we've been talking about building the village center around the village core to...
I mean, we can make the change, I just want you to understand that it takes, so what would happen is, it would, it would take us a little longer to get this, changes made in the document and get it, so we probably would miss the May 31st deadline, not by a lot, but we just, just because every, you know, these things, you know, and we've been going through this, and the thing could look simple, but it's sort of like a domino.
Well, no, I, I guess...
Understand that, yeah.
I can see where this is true.
And we're happy to do it. I, you know, I don't want to, if that's the route, if you feel comfortable with that, if you want to go with that, just, you know, I just, you know, it'll take some time to get it done.
Well, I think we should not be calling the village neighborhood out in the western edge of the city. It doesn't make sense.
I think this is a huge, huge thing to make a change at this point in the game to that.
Well, we're...
When we can do it with an amendment later.
The point of then, well, that's a huge, that's going to take a lot of time later to do.
We got time later.
We're, we're presenting this to people in a way that we want it to be clear and make sense to them, however.
You know...
We don't, you know, you don't say it at the last minute, because if, if we've been involved with this and some earlier, these things could have come up earlier, and it was, you, was chosen to go the route we went, which puts us now at the point where we suggest the changes we want to see. In that, we are the final reviewers of the document. It doesn't mean we just accept it, it means that we review the document and we suggest changes if we think that they should be made.
Is, is it something you think the affected jurisdictions will be concerned with? Because otherwise, you have six months while this is out to the affected jurisdictions to change the names on the map.
Is that something that could be done at that point?
We, yeah, we could be doing it, I mean, we would do it over time. I mean, if...
So after you got your, what you're saying is after you got your comments back, there's another chance to kind of do...
To update some things.
A total update and do it at that time.
You'll probably be making other changes in the plan. The Met Council will give you preliminary comments, you'll undoubtedly be making other changes. So if this is primarily a resident of Scandia issue, not something you think your neighbors are going to be concerned about, you could let it go out this way, make yourself a note that you want to update this along with all the other changes you have to make when you get the comments back from the other jurisdictions.
Yeah, that's something.
Would that work, Jane? Work better? Yeah, I do, too, I'm good with that. Okay, thank you both.
So what did you want to call it, rural mixed use?
Well, yeah.
I think that's a good description.
I think that is, too, that was Jim's, I think that's a good idea, good one. Then, I think I'm okay with the next, the idea of the staging is really very tied into appropriate infrastructure. That's what that is, basically, so, because the, I, we use, use as terms like open land for development, which is not, is a new concept in Scandia, but you're talking about through infrastructure, appropriate, necessary infrastructure, so I can, I'm good with that.
Does this allow, I know there was some comment or discussion at the planning commission about, might be in the zoning piece, that says maybe in terms of staging, we put something in there that says, okay, you can't go build another area that isn't contiguous to an existing area? That's how we would attack that point?
There's a section in your zoning ordinance that defines premature development.
Yeah.
And you could work on that a little bit as part of your zoning update to make it clear that that's part of your consideration of premature development, that you're not leapfrogging out.
Perfect. Okay. Thank you.
And I think I'm okay with the next one. On page 29, these are goals now, and there are some changes that I... The, down toward the bottom of page 29, improve designated physical access to the St. Cory River Corridor and other important or high-quality natural areas where public lands may provide access opportunities. I think it is important to, to start that statement with, while preserving natural and historic integrity. We know what we've been through with that, issues around the St. Cory River, and I think putting that statement in there will assure people that that is our intent. So starting it with, while preserving natural and historic integrity, improve designated physical access to the St. Cory River Corridor and other important or high-quality natural areas where public lands may provide access opportunities. Is everyone okay with that?
Are we going to go through this thing, page by page by page, for 125 pages?
We are going through the notes that I've taken on it after I have read through it.
How many notes are we going to deal with?
It's, I've got about two more pages of it.
Okay.
But I thought that was our job. My understanding was that was the role of the city council. This is our document.
Yeah, but I mean, it's, a lot of it's potato, potato, it's a...
I've not said anything I didn't think is important.
We can only discuss the verbiage and the way things are used, but the intent is covered as far as I'm concerned.
So then, we don't have consensus on that, then I'm going to ask for a vote. To add to that second objective, the bottom of page 29, while preserving natural and historic integrity, improve designated physical access to the St. Cory River Corridor and other important or high-quality natural areas where public lands may provide access Okay. Jim?
I'm, I, you know, I don't, I don't want to make a bunch of changes, I guess I don't, I'm, I don't even know what that means.
That's not a hard change to make.
I want, I just want to let you know, I don't even know what that means, how do you do that? Preserve, read that again.
While preserving natural and historic integrity, in other words...
Well, you do that anyway, but...
We are doing it, right. And so we're saying that is our goal, that we're not going to, we know what's, what we've gone through with that area before.
There will be a number of people that will read this as written and say that this is just encouraging us to come in and rip up the area, because we're encouraging access to the river. I think what you're saying is, yes, while we want to have better access, we also want to make sure we're protecting the historical integrity of the area.
And the natural integrity, yeah. Okay, and so, shall we have a vote on that then? I'm going to make a motion that we add that term. Is there a second?
Not seconded.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
One abstention? Bob? Did you vote, you didn't vote?
I would like to accept that it is and be done with it. We have two more, two more chances to make changes in the future.
The next, so you...
I'm opposed.
You're opposed to, okay, you're opposed to that, that, we were voting on that motion. So we've got two, three in favor. On page 37. This is another, another issue of what people have asked for, in my mind, in the surveying that we've done and in the focus groups that we've had. Hope it's not page 37 anymore. Economic competitiveness, yeah. The objective to promote new businesses. Can't find it. Where am I finding it?
Objective, goal, the first goal, objective, three.
The first one, the third one, thank you. Promote new businesses that create synergy with existing businesses and overarching goals. Some terminology, some terminology that reflects what people said very pointedly in the surveying that was done, and that is that they supported appropriate scale businesses, or I think the language that they used and you had in your, one of your presentations that you did was small-scale businesses or something to that effect.
It says here, actively support the retention and expansion of Scandia community scale agricultural operation.
That's the agriculture, yeah, community scale agriculture, and I would like the same to be added or talked about when we talk about businesses, because I think that's the same thing. We could have said agriculture leaving our way for big, big industrial farms, and we didn't, and I think that what people have said they wanted through that surveying process that we did in the, in the, in the focus groups, they wanted businesses, but not, they didn't want a Walmart. They wanted businesses that were appropriate for the size of the town. So I would like to suggest that we change that to promote new businesses, appropriate or appropriate scale businesses that create synergy with existing businesses and overarching How do you feel about that?
What is an appropriate size of a business?
Well, for the size of the town, it would be, you could say small-scale businesses, just how, what does small-scale agriculture mean? I mean, we put that in there. And I think the idea is that we don't want mega-businesses coming in.
I don't think it would support it without sewer and...
No, I don't think it would either, but that doesn't mean, I mean, we know it won't.
I don't want to, if something does that fits this, maybe a full-scale something that might fit this, I don't want that would be, I don't want to deter it, I guess.
That, but that is not what people said they wanted.
Okay.
Which we're trying to respond to what the community has said, the reason we went out and asked them. I had someone who said to me, I wrote it down today, this was a former teacher at Scandi Elementary School, who came out with a group of 80, you'll like this, Ryan, we had a tour at our farm today of 83, 4, and 5-year-olds and their teachers to tour the farm. They were there for about two and a half hours. She said, everyone, her name is Sharon Dorad, you might know her, everyone is envious of what you have in Scandia, and you can lose it in a heartbeat. She, she said, it's what's being replaced by big businesses. Honestly, that's what she said, and when she said it, I told her I was going to quote her tonight. I think that showing that we heard what people said about the size of the business is important. So promote new businesses, appropriate scale businesses, or appropriate for the size of the town, or just like we said, small-scale agriculture, there was some concern about using the word small, and so I left that out of the business description. So I'll say it again and see if we can get agreement, or else we'll vote. So promote new businesses appropriate for the size of the town.
You talked about the small-scale agriculture, that's talking about updating ordinances that facilitate growth of small-scale businesses? And I think what I'm hearing you say is we want to restrict large-scale businesses?
No. It says we're promoting new businesses, not restricting to new businesses.
Oh, it kind of says you're restricting large ones because you want appropriate for a small town, is what I'm getting to.
Well, what word could we use besides promote? To me, that's a word that's saying that's what we, we'd like to give support to those kinds of businesses, but it's not saying that we would deny necessarily.
Okay, I, I misunderstood that.
What would you, what word would be better than promote?
If it's worded that way, well, you, where you wouldn't deny it, if you still had the chance to allow it if you wanted to, I guess I wouldn't have a problem with that. Again, I don't know what that business might be, but I don't want it not to be in there, I don't...
So you'd like to see bullet three changed to say promote some small-scale businesses that create synergy?
Yeah.
Okay, as long as I, as long as we're not restricting the potential for something else to come in that we may find needed?
I don't think that that does.
That's the way I feel, too, I just don't want to do that.
With that restricted nail? If we said to promote them, I mean...
No, just saying that, does that change?
Yeah.
I don't see that as doing it. My concern would be that we're saying, hey, if, if what we have right now is all small-scale businesses, and we want, and all we want is more of that, that...
And I think if you even take a step up and look at what the goal is...
Yeah.
You know, it says concentrate on retaining and expanding local businesses, and I think when you, local businesses is, you know, that implies small-scale, locally owned, and, you know, that's really what the goal is.
What if there was a manufacturing wanting to come in there and make something that really, that the people in Scandia would want, say it's something for this heritage or this community, it's something that, you know, and it's going to employ a bunch of people in it, I don't want to even think of restricting something like that. That's what I don't want to do by these statements. I don't know what this would be, but...
You know, and some of that would be in our zoning code, I mean, our zoning code in...
It's only the zoning code that will determine this, what size of lots, what coverage you allow, and whether you have central sewer and water, because honestly, you're not going to get a Walmart without...
Not a Walmart, no.
No, but I mean, you know, you know, light manufacturing is probably the, you know, the best example, but that's allowed in our zoning code. So this would not, you know, restrict that.
Yeah, so if you want to say promote appropriately scaled, properly sized new businesses, that's fine.
If it says promote, you know, it doesn't, doesn't say you can't have them, yeah. Yep, I'm good with that.
Okay. All right?
Yeah.
Bob? Okay.
Is it appropriate for the size of the town, is that the language?
Appropriate size business.
Appropriate size?
Is that what you said?
Well, it was appropriate, yeah, for the, for the size of the town that creates synergy with existing businesses. All right, I'd be, I'd be okay with appropriate-sized businesses. All right, I'd be, I'd be okay with appropriate-sized businesses. I'd be okay with that. Since that, everybody has agreed to that. Okay. Did, were you able to listen to that tape, Neil, about the?
There is nothing with regard to the architectural design guidelines.
Okay, I'm going to leave that out, then I'm not going to. And that goes on page fifty-one. Oh, you love this. Bob, you're going to love this one. Make sure it's still.
Housing implementation grid.
Well, I think, I think it's been fixed already, maybe.
Yeah, I fixed that one.
You fixed that one already? Okay.
Not fixed on this one, but.
Yeah, all right.
Put in the two.
Continue.
Or something, change the wording on it, yeah. And then the next one deals with that, the village mixed-use that we talked about earlier, so that's okay. Um, under natural resources, utilizing tools such as open space conservation subdivisions and lot averaging is part of development. That we did not have that in here.
Where was?
What page?
Under natural resources.
Oh, that's on the.
It's in the appendix, maybe.
The appendix.
So, um. The appendix F. Under natural resources, yep. Or maybe not. No, it's, it's under natural resources.
My council actually looks for that in your land use section.
Oh, maybe it is on this. Okay, hold on just a minute, sorry. The very first one, protect natural resources and look for opportunities to connect large areas of land. As a third one under there, to have utilizing tools such as open space conservation subdivisions and lot averaging as part of development. So we have it specifically called out in this plan. Jane, is it called out anywhere else? Those terms, those concepts?
The utilize tools?
No, the, open space conservation subdivisions.
You've got that in land use somewhere, you know, they allow those.
Yes, yeah, we, no.
So that they're allowed use.
That's where my council wants to see them is in your land use section to know if you're going to allow those approaches.
Right, but this is, this is under the action plan, though.
This is part of the action plan.
So you could add it there too, but, yeah.
Yeah, this is the number three under that, so that it is, but maybe, I mean, I, I guess I would be all right not, as long as we're sure it's under the other.
And it's in your ordinance already, it's not in.
But the ordinance can change based on the new comprehensive plan, so that's not. Okay, and then my next ones are. Uh, I think we've covered those already, and then I'm done. Should, well, there is one more. Should we have reference to a glossary? To the glossary that's in our development code, rather than starting a new glossary here, just, I'm not sure. Maybe there are no terms in there. There were things that came up as I was reading that I thought people might not understand, but we don't, we certainly don't want to have a duplicate glossary, but just to maybe to make reference to. Terminology can be found there. Is there anyone else who would like to make any comments?
So right now, we've got a glossary in this one. You want to just refer to the.
Yeah, in the development code, so instead of starting a new glossary. Okay. So is there any further discussion? In that case, I, that will look for a motion.
To new resolution fifteen, uh, oh-five, fifteen, fifteen oh-five, authorizing the release of the comprehensive plan update for the city as amended.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you very much, and that brings us up to our building official report, staff reports. Building official?
There really has not been a huge change for the month. I think I've addressed it in my staff report.
Okay.
We have ninety permits at a little bit over fourteen million. That compares with sixty-seven permits for about three million last year. Both years, we had three new homes through this point in time. Pardon?
One more new construction.
Okay. Four, very good. Okay, and that brings us to our sheriff.
Good evening.
Good evening, good to see you.
That was a slow, quiet month. Um, that's, we'll change when school gets out, but had a stolen car that we found on Mayberry, got dumped from Blaine where it got stolen. Got that back to the owner, no suspects on that one. Um, couple of other self-initiated arrests off the street, otherwise been quiet. Any other questions?
Good.
That you guys have over the last month, or when the pine's been quiet, been hiking it a little bit, so no updates from that.
You're, you did your dare, was that last time we talked about that?
Yeah, that was, dare was last time, so.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, fire? Mike?
Good evening, you have the report. Um, I do have one thing, it's on there, that we got our new SCBA's, we put them in service on Saturday and had a fire Saturday afternoon, so we already have to use them. And then the county nine-one-one dispatch center is turning on their new computer-aided dispatch on May twenty-second. So we're in the process of re-lettering a few of the trucks and trying to get everyone ready for that changeover.
Do you have a backup plan in case it doesn't work?
Sort of, going back to the old way.
Stick with the old system.
But this has been in process for about ten years, and they finally decided they're far enough, they're going to put it in, because nothing's ever perfect the first time you turn it on, so.
Should be obsolete, ten years.
Uh, we're on our fourth or fifth.
I know, that's what doesn't last long without becoming obsolete.
I just hate for it to be your house that doesn't get caught.
Uh, we're still using the radios to talk, so.
Okay, any other questions for Mike?
Nope.
No?
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mike.
All right, that takes us to engineering.
Mayor, City Council, just some additions to my written reports of the two thousand eighteen street project. We had the pre-construction meeting, uh, May seventh. Contractors already been working, obviously. We did, just because of us and driveway lengths and all that, we mailed notices of the project to every single property. It included the inspector's name and contact, phone, email, just so they had one single point to deal with everything, and then also with the bottom, talked about instructions how to sign up for email updates on the city's website, so we'll provide those weekly, and then.
That's great.
Obviously, as we move through neighborhoods and start doing work, the inspector engages with the properties that are around and all that. Today, we finished the storm sewer crossings on Kirk, which should be finished two-thirtieth by the end of this week and jump on two-twenty-eighth, and then do some stuff on Old Marine Trail, get that all done before the Fat Cap Triathlon. So that, that progress is, our project is in progress, obviously very good bids. Uh, we're putting together a change order for council consideration at the next meeting that could add a lot of lenient fee to the projects with the bidding that we received. I did provide very detailed stuff on the Washington County project, so if you read through both of those, you'll have a better idea of what the scope of work is and limits of that project. Just one other item I want to highlight is effective August first, the threshold of competitive bidding has increased, so for ten years, we've kind of been locked at that hundred thousand dollar mark, where over that, you had to go for the full plan spec bid process. Now it increased up to a hundred seventy-five thousand, so gives us some flexibility, obviously it's helped with inflation, but often our quotes are below a hundred thousand anyways, but, you know, this is obviously provides us more flexibility, and then that's all I got, unless you got any questions.
All right, some of that, oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry, how's that going to work with the three-point-eight million one coming up next year? And when should we put out for bids for that to get a super, super low price?
We're done with three-point-eight million one-dollar ones for a while.
Huh? This is for road construction that we borrowed, right?
Right. So that's already bid.
Oh, that's, all right.
Yeah.
Oh, I thought we were doing that next year.
We thought, because we, we thought it was going to be six million.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it might, Mayberry Trail come into the plan somewhere?
Uh, we're looking at.
Oh, it's horrible.
Two oh-fifth.
Yeah.
To Mayberry. And then we'll see how far we can get heading west to the Lofton area and what we do in there, so.
Thank you.
So what we got to do is, uh, first, obviously find out how many culverts we got to replace, and then stuff like that, and then. Want to get it fairly close, uh, by state law, we can award up to twenty-five percent more, just to be conservative in case we run into some issues in the project, bad soils, something buried. We're just going to estimate at twenty-three percent, still allow some cushion, and then I'll put basically kind of a bid form together, which then would be produced into a change order for your consideration. So I'll bring back.
Okay.
All the pricing, a map, and a formal agenda item before we proceed with anything.
Okay, thank you.
Auditors will like that as well.
Mayor, I just want to say one thing to Ryan, that.
Yeah.
This crew that's doing this work, they're leaving us messages every day that they're working, so we know which roads are closed.
Oh, that's nice, that's good.
Very helpful.
Very nice.
Yeah, very good. Well, I like the email updates too, because I signed up for an email update.
Any way we can communicate.
That's good.
Large area, so.
That's very good. Okay, that brings us to the April Public Works report.
Oh, I didn't really have anything, anyway.
Were you on there? Did I skip right over you?
Yeah.
Oh, I see.
Not, not the first time that's happened.
Well, I'm, I'm working off the screen instead of the agenda, that's the problem.
I saved all my strength to answer anything on the bond issue, but that zoomed right through, so.
Did you have anything else you'd like to say?
I did not, thank you.
All right, sorry about that.
No problem.
April Public Works.
Yeah, Mayor, City Council, um, I have my formal report submitted before you. A couple of little notes, um, of interest, passing, just the coal patch so far this year, just to keep things, uh, keep cars on the road. We put down five-point-three tons of coal mix already, um, and, uh, we're going to start the hot mix here now pretty soon, so. Be more going down here as soon as we finish off some of our other pending projects here for the spring. Also, wind in the pines update. I do have signs being made at this point in time. We got, uh, the first proofs today. I actually have, uh, through, uh, your suggestion there, of having some marks on the map of you are here, so we have some designated site area on seven different signs. And I also produced an aerial with where the trail goes through along with the property lines designated out within there, so all those signs will be posted out. Our goal is to get off it from the more of it we can, since that's where we have the most traffic under the park.
Thank you.
Or preserve, should start using the appropriate language for that, preserve. Thank you, Chris, for that idea, that's a good idea.
Any questions for Adam? All right, thank you, Adam. Then Administrator's report, Neil?
Couple of things I wanted to focus on, Neil. Ryan mentioned the one that for, really for the benefit of the public, if they would like an update, uh, we will. Bolton and Mank will be providing weekly updates on our website. There's an option to sign up, so we can just relay those to those people. The other thing, there's a news item on our website that also has links to the county, two county project update sites. So if you're wondering what's going on on Olinder, Oak Hill, you can be directed in that, uh, you know, to those locations. The one, uh, item that is going to be a bit of a constraint this year, I know, you know, we are continuing to advertise for a part-time parks person. We had, uh, the person we've had the past couple of years has another position, and we have had nobody to date apply. I've moved that up on our website as a news item, and we'll start promoting that. I think the other thing that we have coming up at some point in time is, you know, one of Adam's Public Works staff will be off seeking medical leave from us. So, uh, we can, you know, we don't know when that's going to occur, but we can deal with that probably at the June meeting. The one thing that I included in the packet, there are two other things. There was that offer from Green Step Cities with regard to participating in Soul Smart, which is just a free technical assistance program, that if we're ever thinking about getting back into the community solar garden, uh, may be an interesting resource, uh, to participate in. It would be free and would allow us to really, you know, get some, uh, no-cost technical assistance if we were going to try to reshape that ordinance. I think the other thing in there, uh, that I'd call your attention, well, I think that's, that's really it. The other thing that's in there was with regard to Frontier, uh, that, you know, we were, you know, the Public Utilities Commission has, uh, is initiating a investigation with regard to Frontier. One of the things in here, you know, the notice that's in your packet was one that Frontier was required to send to each community, but also in here, there is a, uh, as a part of that order, there is a public notice that will be going out that everybody will getting, uh, insert in their bill with regard to the ability to submit comments about Frontier's service. So those who are Frontier customers, whether, you know, for telephone, you will be getting that. And that's all I have, unless you have other questions.
And I'd like to expand on that for just a second. Um, we also received today from Frontier, a, a communication and a map, uh, that shows specifically where the upgrades have occurred.
Do you want to explain who "we" is?
Frontier.
No, you say we have received today.
Oh, Neil and I got one in the mail today from Frontier at, uh, our internet focus group had talked to both of these groups, and we've specifically asked Frontier to help us put together a communication for our residents that would say, if you live in these, this area, you can get the upgrade.
They actually sent you a map?
Yes, and call this number in order to get a local number, a local person who can get you the service. If you're not in this area, it's going to be a while before you get it. So if you get marketing or other stuff from us, this is the truth. So we'll, we'll work with Neil to see if we can't get that in the newsletter or on the website, whatever, so we can start getting some facts out to people rather than Frontier saying, hey, go sign up for the service, and then you call and they find out that, oh, I can't, you can't get it. And they're getting solicited two, three times a week to get a service they can't sign up for.
Yeah, I think their marketers oversold their engineering staff.
Yeah, so, um, and I think if I look at that map properly, they showed where the new nodes are on that map.
That's something that's going to be published for the.
Well, I think we need to, we need to get that out to our residents.
Yeah.
And it's, it's officially sanctioned by Frontier that said, here's a communication that we will support.
So we can put that on the website.
So we can get it on the website. Get clear communication to folks.
Very good. Thank you, Steve. Okay, any other questions for Neil or Steve? We've, let me move on to nine, and we have already dealt with nine A and nine B. So we're up to the report on the holiday lighting. Judy, did you want to talk? Did you, are you privy to the, the conversation that Lynette and I have had?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, good. So do you want to, would you like to say something to us, or you want to hear us talk first?
I would just like to hear what you heard back from, from Temple.
Okay.
Yeah.
Which is nothing yet.
Oh, great, yeah.
Okay, so here's, um.
And I brought with all the paperwork and, and the stuff that we, you know, had, uh, forms to apply for and everything, so.
Okay.
I'll leave that with Brendan.
Okay, so here's what, um, this is what's happened with the, you want to put it up there? The Lions, um, have agreed to give us three thousand dollars. The Lions have agreed to give us three thousand dollars. There were some questions that came up for, as we were discussing it here internally here, and one of those was concerns about the size around the lamp of the one that.
And that's fine.
Judy had first talked to us about.
Yes, it's fine.
And the size is good. But when we talked about the double lamps, those double lamps that we have, I called the representative from the company, talked with the representative from Temple Display and he felt that that could be a problem. That we might, would rather go with a pole-mounted display rather than the lamp display.
My suggestion is, is to use the pole-mounted on that, it's just the two double lights, isn't it?
Right.
Three?
Two.
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 Yeah.
I think it's two, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, use, use like, you know, like the snowflake thing we did before, whatever, on that, on that one and then use the other one on, on all the regular signals.
Okay. So here's what he's doing for us.
Okay, yeah.
Is he, we sent him pictures of our lamps and he's having their graphic department Photoshop the displays and we gave him four to look at actually, because after the discussion about whether it would make sense to have different ones on different lamps and what that would look like. He was going to do the one that Judy and Lynette had first presented to us. He's going to look at the one next to it, what, this one? Here, which was one that was, received a great deal of favorable comment from staff. And then also looking at the two snowflakes on the next page. So this is called Winterfest Snowflake and this is called Presidential Snowflake, the lower one. And to show us what they would look like. Now the, there is some, you wanna talk about it at all, Neil, at this point?
I, you know, I think the, you know, the Lions said they would spend up to, you know, three thousand dollars and match what the city has. And obviously, you know, some of these are going to cost more and if we wanted to look at those, what we could probably do is, you know, the resolution was prepared was accepting the donation of up to three thousand dollars and then providing, you know, a budgetary limit as to, you know, what we would spend and I mean, that would be, that would be the option if we were going to go to some of these other lights. Because I think these are all, you know, slightly more expensive, I think.
Yeah, some of them are quite additional expensive.
Well, I think not the ones that we sent him today.
Are you committed to this provider?
No, I don't think they are.
Are you committed to this provider?
No, 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 because.
I spent about.
We have to send the order in together and.
I spent about five minutes online and there's dozens of sources.
There's all kinds of companies, we went online and checked out a whole bunch of different owners and this company seemed to have the best deal and they, I, I thought, you know, the least is looking ornaments or decorations or whatever you wanna call them.
So the question is, do we want to, do you wanna, now say it, how would, how would it be said, Neil?
Well, you know, number one, you know, the question is, you know, the resolution we have would, you know, would provide for accepting up to three thousand dollars from the Lions, but then would also set a, you know, a maximum that we would spend essentially.
Wasn't there also a timeline?
Six thousand, but if, if for some of these, if you wanted to go higher, we would have to make that change.
And I think if we said, depending upon what they come back with, if we set a threshold that we would spend of, say, instead of the three thousand, we would contribute four thousand, it would cover any of the ones that we have asked them to look at. And maybe, I mean, maybe as, as little as another three hundred and fifty dollars more, but it could be as much as up to nine hundred more, so.
Did I miss something? I thought we were talking about like four thousand or forty-five hundred dollars or something like that.
I thought we put a cap on it last time and they were talking fifteen grand for the whole.
Well, I think what we were doing is scaling this down.
We scaled it way down.
To just kind of the downtown area where we were doing a limited number of lamps and figuring that we would stage that out over time.
Yeah, our intention was that we would do this much this year and then.
Right, okay, I remember that.
Probably save a lot again next year.
Right.
And so eventually we'll get them all, all covered.
But we, we put a, didn't we put a price on last time, three thousand if the Lions matched us?
Right.
We did.
And now you wanna add another thousand, and is the Lions gonna add another thousand?
Well, they are not, they were not asked to. They, it's the question of, and the problem, or part of, part of the challenge is the timeline we've got. 'Cause to get the twenty-five percent discount, it has to be done, we have to decide at this meeting.
Yeah.
But I think.
Yeah, they have to be ordered by the, uh, May thirty-first.
Right.
Yeah.
They would be, the ones with the lights won't wear out, they don't fade, that's the.
No.
Plus of them.
And we'd order them with the LED lights so the lights would last a while.
Right.
Yeah.
And if, and, and a very dramatic effect, I think, they'll be very different from the ones we currently have, which are the wreaths and the old, the one that we were looking at was more of that. So what are, Neil, we have money to cover that?
We do have money in the Capital Improvement Fund, which is where this would come from.
But the, the price difference is for two lamps?
No, this would be for a different design than the one we had chosen. This would cover all the fifteen.
Oh.
Lamps.
Okay, so you're thinking, trying to get the same one on all fifteen instead of saying, hey, do thirteen of this and two of that.
Yeah, yeah, that would look kinda tacky.
So if, if I understand, Mayor, you had a conversation with the manufacturer?
Or the representative from the company, yeah.
Was it brought up whether or not the mounting hardware to put on the lights is provided with?
No.
With the lights? Yeah.
Never asked that question.
Yeah.
Very important. Was that an additional cost?
Well, and that's why I'm asking the question. There's an additional cost or do we have to make something ourselves or?
Part of what we have will work and be adapted, take off the old and add it to this.
Correct, yeah.
If we do the pole-mounted one, it's more likely that that would happen rather than the lamp one.
Right.
Okay, but I will ask the question about, is hardware included?
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam. Okay, so to that beautiful look, how are you feeling? Wanting to nudge out a little more?
I've had people say, why are you wasting your money and time on this? And I don't agree with that, but we said three thousand dollars and that's where I'm at.
I agreed on that last meeting too, I guess, that's kinda where I'm at.
That's where you're at too, so we just go with the cheaper ones and have them.
Are you sure that they wouldn't look, they would look all goofy, 'cause you've got two different types of style of lights?
That we have two different things on, you mean, have some lights with one thing on it and some lights with something else?
Some lights that have a single standard and you have some lights that have two.
Right.
And maybe the lights with, that are single have one decoration and the lights that have two have a different decoration. The lights themselves are already different looking.
But that's.
I don't know. I've seen communities that have three or four different ones and they alternate them all over the place and it doesn't look all that bad.
But it's some kind of a pattern.
I can't see any reason why we couldn't just put the wreath on, on, on one of the doubles, you know, shouldn't make any difference.
And that I think would look a little goofy.
I think that'd look great. Better. Bob, how you feeling?
I have a completely different direction.
He wants to build them himself.
Well, I went online and I found all kinds of sources at far lower prices, far lower prices. But I still like the idea of finding or at least putting out an RFP to someone locally who's interested in actually doing these. You know, it could be a, a dale horse for all I care, but if you go through Light Bear right now, they've got, they've got a banner up for an arts fair that they've got going on there. And I think, thinking about this in a more global sense, if we find a source that can make these things for us, it.
Judy, go ahead.
The original spray decorations were made right here in Scandia and, well, how can I describe it politely? I can't think of a good way. Okay, they looked like they were homemade and they, they didn't cut the mustard. I mean, we used, I think about ten years that, that they were used and then finally decided something had to be done. So that's when we got those ones that are up there now, or have been up there.
So let me ask this, would you be willing to go, Council, back to you, would you be willing to go like four hundred dollars more?
No. No, no.
So three thousand, you're gonna stick with three thousand?
Yeah.
That's, so that's two and I know Bob isn't gonna say anything and so.
Well, if there's three, then he'll say no, it doesn't matter.
So you don't wanna come out and say what you would say? All right, all right.
Three grand, if you're gonna put in three grand, use it as you will.
All right.
To accomplish as much as you can, you know.
We could, I mean, the other, the other thing, the other thing we could do is do fewer polls.
Do ten polls instead of twelve.
Yeah, I mean, that is the other thing we could do, all right. You have made your wishes known.
So if that's the case, the resolution that is up there stands. It would accept the donation from the Lions Club of up to three thousand dollars and then it would amend the budget by adding the donation of three thousand dollars to the revenue and add an expenditure of six thousand dollars from the Capital Improvement Fund.
Okay, so moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Yep.
Aye, all right. Thank you, Judy. And that brings us to the resolution amending the budget for filming and broadcasting of city meetings and aquatic invasive species control and inspection.
So.
Two things.
And what we would, what would add to this would be additional, it's four thousand nine thirty-three, I like rounded numbers. Let's just say five thousand dollars for the tennis courts from the four oh one Capital Improvement Fund. So we would add that as a line item.
Okay. Is there a motion?
You're gonna have to explain the cable TV stuff to me now. I thought last week, did we, did we talk about it at the work session?
Well, what this would do for the cable TV is it would allow us to buy that equipment to livestream. It would provide for a year of live streaming service and retention. The other thing it provides for is money and those, and the way it's written, some of that would come from PEG funds.
Right.
And then some of it from franchise fees. And then so the, so the sixteen hundred dollars would be for the, to box cast for the live streaming service for a year.
That's the package we talked about at the work session.
Right. The forty-seven hundred dollars below that would cover the cost, the production cost from Lakes Area TV to film the, for the remaining six months of council meetings, planning commission meetings and the Taco Days event. And then the other two items would actually be for the box cast equipment and a little bit of money that might help us if we needed help getting it set up. So that's what all those items are.
Okay, Jim?
Yep.
All right.
And thirty-five hundred, obviously, for the AIS inspections.
So we had a motion? We had a second? We had a discussion, any further? All in favor? We don't have any of that?
No, no, no.
We didn't have any.
What motion?
I was trying, I was trying. Okay, is there a motion?
I drew resolution oh five fifteen eighteen oh eight, amending the budget for filming, broadcasting of meetings, aquatic species control inspections and the.
Tennis courts.
Amended for the tennis courts.
Thousand dollars.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Brings us to discussion on the award of quotes for the two thousand eighteen crack filling project.
Mayor, City Council, we received six quotes, very competitive. It's our recommendation to award a quote to Seal Tech Incorporated in an amount of eighty-two hundred dollars to complete the work on the attached map.
Okay.
Have we dealt with them before?
No, in Scandia.
But you're familiar with them?
Oh.
Just questions for Ryan?
How can one guy be twelve thousand dollars more than the others?
He's got enough work for this year.
He doesn't want to do that, I don't know, all right.
Okay, questions, no motion?
I make a motion that we award the bid to Seal Tech Inc. for the crack filling.
Second.
Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next about the spray patching project, Ryan?
So this is a little more specialized type of work, we received three quotes. Recommendation is to award a quote to Payment Resources Incorporated in an amount of nine thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Again, remember, this project is split into segments, number five and six at two fortieth, which is shared with Shisago City, or Shisago Township. And six is shared with Franconia, so they would split that dollar amount, so our actual cost to the city would be less than nine seven fifty. Payment Resources did walk the project site with Adams, so they're, you know, they're familiar. Farmer Esfald was the contractor we had last year, I don't know if they're trying to make up for the drug situation.
He's really pretty.
But.
Too mad.
It's our, we're looking to award to Payment Resources Incorporated.
So how do you ensure that our adjoining communities pay half of whatever we approve?
We already coordinated that, so we would prepare or send an invoice sort of thing to them for their share.
And they don't know what that is yet?
Well, they, they were given estimates and they're way higher.
Okay.
I know Franconia personally budgeted nine thousand dollars and their share is going to be.
Forty-five, forty-eight?
Fifteen hundred divided by two, seven fifty.
Wow.
Yeah. Don't tell them.
She broadcasts.
Oh, darn.
Okay.
All right, any other questions? Beth, has there a motion then on the patching project?
Well, I move that we awarded the bid to Payment Resources for the spray patching.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And next to the fire department compensation.
For fire department compensation at the, at the work session, the council wanted me to look, work with legal counsel in terms of how we could accomplish the pay increase that the chief had requested. One of the things that, there's a fairly lengthy memo in there from Lyta Bannick. One of the things that she noted in here is that, you know, even though it is a stipend, both the ordinance, it creates fire department, lists the firefighters as part-time on-call employees and that's even consistent with what is in our current ordinance. So one of the things of that, in her analysis of it, was that the fire chief, because the chief does more than administrative duties, would be, would not be an exempt employee under Fair Labor Standards Act and would be eligible to receive overtime for hours worked over forty hours. So the ordinance in front of you would provide for that where the compensation, you will call it other compensation instead of a stipend, would be increased from three hundred and fifty dollars a month to two thousand seven fifty per month. Plus, the chief would be paid the hourly increments when responding to calls. That's, you know, that would allow for that compensation increase. I think one of the things that, you know, I noted in my memo is, you know, I still think would be, you know, appropriate to take a look at the job description with, so we could clarify, you know, what should be in there in terms of hours of work duties, responsibilities and performance inspections. But the resolution in front of you would accomplish, you know, what was requested at the, at the work session. You know, and one of the other things that, you know, Lyta noted and is in there was the requirement under state statutes for paying employees if they are, you know, if they were volunteers and, you know, there is a fairly extensive definition in Fair Labor Standards Act in terms of what's a volunteer. If they were volunteers, when paying volunteers, it can't be paid on a performance. Uh, if they were volunteers, when paying volunteers, they, it can't be paid on a performance basis. And that's the difference between hourly pay or just a stipend of X amount per month. Uh, because of that, uh, Lyda called our attention to a provision where, because they're employees, they have to be paid at least every, twice a month, either semi-monthly. So one of the things that we would probably look to do, uh, as additional duties that the chief is not currently doing, is, uh, probably doing bi-weekly payroll, so that we stay, all the employees stay in the same pay cycle.
Okay, questions for Neil?
How, how does the overtime thing work, and how, uh, uh, and maybe, Mike, you can answer this by keeping, we're gonna, we're talking thirty-three grand a year, right?
Right.
And are we gonna keep it to that?
As a stipend.
And it's, when will the overtime thing kick in, or will it ever?
The overtime would kick in if, in the event the chief worked more than forty hours, and... Well, you could do, one of the things you can do with firefighters is you can establish a work period. There's difference between a work, you know, a work week, but for, uh, firefighters and police officers, you can designate a work period. So as opposed to a work week, if he worked over forty hours, we could say, and this is why I wanna put in the job description.
Yeah.
We could say his work period is twenty-eight days. So in that twenty-eight days to get overtime, he would have to work more than one hundred sixty hours. So I mean, if there was a week where Mike, you know, everything went into flames in the city, and Mike was working sixty hours, uh, the week after that, when he was resting up from working sixty hours, you know, those would offset each other, and it would minimize the chance of paying overtime. So I think that's one of the reasons, I, you know, I'd like to get that language in a change in the job description.
Makes sense.
I'd like to hear what Mike thinks.
It's all pretty good, um, the one thing is, is the bi-weekly pay is, that's gonna be a big challenge 'cause of the, right now, currently, to get paid, we give the guys at the end of the month a pay slip, and they sign off that they agree that that's their time. To try to do it every two weeks is gonna be, we're, we're gonna have to come up with some other...
Is that for everybody, or just Mike?
That would probably, if they're an employee, they have to be paid bimonthly.
So we don't have, we don't have a choice on that anymore, in other words?
Right.
I mean, you, you have a choice, but then you're out of compliance with state statute, so...
Right.
I wouldn't recommend it.
That could be done by email, or by computer, or something?
We, we can figure out the process, I don't think it's gonna have to be as...
We'll have to figure something else.
It could be their responsibility, the firefighter, to every two weeks turn his time on the computer, right?
Well, they're, right now, we check off online, or on a sheet that we enter into our infers system. And, yeah, it's supposed to be the, the firefighter's responsibility to make sure that they're on that sheet if they were there.
Yeah.
And what part of that is, is we say that at the end of the month, they get to look over it and see if they missed anything, and it'll be a little different.
They'll have to do it, yeah.
So either they're just gonna get paid what they get paid and have to argue it later, or we'll have to figure that part of it out, doing it bi-weekly.
And a lot of times, in terms of pay cycles, like even with public works, you know, if something, you know, comes in at a, at a late, you know, at a late hour, you just adjust it the next pay. But, you know, the, the biggest, you know, concern here would be, you know, overtime for Mike, but I think the way you would do it is designate a twenty-eight day work period.
Well, I think at the workshop, there were some concerns about, that you had about this transition, and what might it do, and what does the city need to get done, and just, are you okay with this at this point?
Yep, I think everything works right now.
Okay.
Are your numbers on calls, does that include May Township, or is that just Scandia?
Are...
Numbers of EMS and fire calls?
That includes May Township.
It does.
I mean, we divide it out when we do their contract and stuff, but...
Chief, I admire you a lot, but I am, I have a real problem adding thirty thousand plus to the overhead when we've got one fire call every two weeks on average. That's a huge increase in our budget. And we don't, we don't have a lot of activity that justifies that kind of change.
We...
We've got eleven fire calls so far this year, and that's us in May Township both. That's one every two weeks.
And how many EMS calls?
Well, most of the EMS, the, they're five to one.
Yeah. Well, I, I get it, but I mean, on today's scenario...
And Hugo, Hugo has limited their EMS by basically quantifying it by having the nine-one-one operators ask them our questions to determine whether or not we need to send twelve people.
Yeah.
But fundamentally, I have a real problem justifying this kind of change in overhead based on the numbers that we have. We have a huge capital expense, and we've got a fairly significant annual expense as it is, now we're gonna add a big jump to that. And I understand where you're coming from with your personal life.
Most of that expense, though, doesn't change whether we have one call or fifty calls.
Yeah, I realize that.
You know, and...
But adding, adding all of the time that you're gonna put in to bring you up to another twenty-seven fifty a month is supposedly to do things that you haven't been able to do. The question is, were, were they really needing to be done in the first place, because they haven't been done? I mean, how much more do we have to go to, to justify that? What's your thoughts?
Yeah.
Well, there's always things that we have to do. There's things that we do only as we need, and as much as we need. Like I said before, we miss out on grants 'cause we just don't fill them off.
And I, I've looked at the list of duties that you put down, the things that you would plan to do. A lot of it is attending the convention at the state, and the national, and the...
Those are minor things on the list.
It may be expenses covered by somebody else, but you're getting paid for that. And so, we're a small town of four thousand people. Um, I just met the former police chief in, in Shisago, and they have, uh, fire departments in Shisago and Lindstrom that covered over ten thousand people, and neither one of them has a part-time chief. It really is hard to find parallels where we could justify this kind of cost, from my perspective at least. We are the responsible people who are parceling out the city's money. I'm giving you my opinion.
I just, I don't remember you saying this before, and then, have you said this as part of the, this conversation we've been having the last couple of months?
Well, I, I voiced my thoughts along the way, be, I, I understand where, where you're coming from, chief, and you wanna do the best job that you can, and we have to justify it from our perspective. If I had to sit and justify based on a call every two weeks for fire, the investment that we have made and wanna now increase, I would have a hell of a time justifying that. And I think we need to have some changes in the future, because at some point in time, it all breaks down. And, and I've discussed that with Steve, that maybe we need to bring, you know, other cities into the mix. Maybe it's Marina St. Croix in addition to May Township, I'm not sure what it is. But somehow, we gotta change these numbers.
I don't completely disagree with you, Bob, but I think totally discounting the EMS is a little short-sighted right now. But the other side of what I'm seeing is, and I asked the chief this a couple of weeks ago, where do we see this department ten years from now? Somebody needs to spend the time to take a look at where are we today, where are we going, what changes need to get made.
Yeah, we just looked at the comprehensive plan, what does it say the population, population is ten years from now?
Five hundred people more than we have now.
Ten percent more.
Yeah. So, there may be some opportunities, I, I think there are opportunities to make some changes in the way things function, but if you don't have somebody who's looking at that, it's not gonna happen. And I don't know that we have the staff in place today, and the hours to sit down and re-evaluate how that's supposed to look, and to comply with all the state requirements that we have to comply with. I think we need to get Mike to take a look at what's going on, put together a plan for where to go, and that might mean that, you know, it's five to one EMS. Maybe we need a smaller fire department, but we need a bigger emergency response department, or same size. I don't know if it makes sense to have every firefighter being EMS. I don't, I don't know all those answers right now, but somebody has to be looking at it. And I think this is an opportunity to get somebody some time to begin doing that.
And I agree, I think not counting EMS is, is, is looking short-sighted. Because a lot of the other communities have ambulances stationed, Shisago has an ambulance stationed in Shisago. You know, our call today, they came from Lila Lakes. That's where I...
They've got a hospital there.
Lila Lakes?
Who, who does?
Well, there's a bench clinic right there.
Not a hospital?
Yeah, and that's the old hospitals where their ambulances are stationed at.
And Neil, did you work out, um, the, the idea of the conferences and attending, and where that would come out?
No, that's one of the things I, that I think, you know, you know, from the, you know, my staff report at the work session, you know, we kind of jumped to the compensation, really didn't talk about that, and I think some of those things need to be clarified in the job description.
And, and how do we, you know, how do we control that, Mike? Because you work for the council, and we can't micromanage what you do on a day-to-day basis.
Right.
So somehow or another, you've gotta be tasked with regard to the job description, and then account for your time at the same time. So your job description has to include some accountability within that process, so we can see whether or not we've made a good decision in paying out that extra money.
Right.
And once we do this, it's gonna be very hard to back up.
Well, and we, I, I think we've talked a little bit as well, do we need the thirty-three hours? Is it somewhere in between where we're at and thirty-three, I, I don't know.
Right, and that's an option of different amounts.
You know...
You know, like, you know, a prime example is you're, you're expecting I'll be on for three days in June for training for the full planning program that Neil talked about, that I end up taking vacation and derelict in my duties there.
I mean, one good thing we've learned here is that, first of all, you're, even, you are a part-time employee already. All the firefighters are. So that changes the basis on which you're paid to bimonthly, which is fine. And it's, you know, we're addressing the issue of hourly compensation. But the question is, the other compensation, where do we draw that line? How do we account for that time appropriately to justify, as far as the council is concerned, that, that investment is made, being made appropriately?
Yeah, well, that's where I thought we, as I said, let's get that task list of things that have to be done, and the schedule of when it's supposed to be done. And one of the things that we would want Mike to do is to check off when he did all of those things.
But didn't we also...
Like asking the fox to watch the hen hoves.
Didn't we also charge Neil with, to come up with the description of that?
Nope.
We asked you to...
Work on its compensation.
Just, that's all we asked you to do.
That's all you asked for.
I thought we had talked about the procedure and the...
I had raised it in my staff report, but, you know, the motion that came out of the council was to find out how to compensate him. Now, so that redoing the job description...
That's why we jumped right to this.
Right.
Okay, that was unfortunate.
Yeah, but we'll, we'll leave the job description rewritten, or adjusted.
And I can work with Mike on that. I mean, you know, the other option in terms of, like, the alternate hours, you know, and I think Lyda mentions that in her, uh, in her memo, that for administrative duties, instead of twenty-seven fifty a month, we could, we could change that to hourly, so that way, I mean, you know, and be with the expectation that you work X number of hours a month. I mean, but again, that would be put in the job description, you know, to, so that if you're working twenty-four hours, you know, you know, based upon, you know, on a monthly basis, you know, that's where, that's where your wage would be.
You could be caught on a grass fire for twenty hours or something, yeah? Carlos Sager, yeah, yeah?
There are, yes, there are other rarities that are...
See, that's the issue I got, you know, the forty, the overtime thing, you know, the thirty-three thousand that we talked about, I'm kinda with, you can sit down and do a bunch of stuff in one month to get a, you know, for the whole year type deal, I, I guess, I, I, I don't know, I don't know what you gotta do. I know there's more, stuff you gotta do now that you never used to have to do, I do know that. But I, the overtime thing, I mean, this could turn into fifty grand if you, you know, there's a bunch of...
Well, I mean, and the other thing in there, that if the, you know, call it the stipend, for lack of a better word, but for, you know, the payment for the administrative duties, if that was reduced to an hourly rate, and let's say he was at a fire call for a long time, obviously, he's not gonna be doing his other duties, and that might help mitigate them, so I mean, really, you'd have an employee with two different pay rates. You know, maybe the best way of doing it is when he's doing administrative duties up to twenty-four hours per week, he would be compensated at X amount, and while he's on fire calls, you know, fire EMS calls, he'd be compensated at Y amount.
That's not all that uncommon.
That's not all that uncommon, I mean, I, I dealt with that before with public works.
That makes more sense.
Yeah.
That allows us to ramp up as needed for work that you're doing, and it allows some accountability back to the council to figure out what's, how it's being spent.
You can manage overtime.
And I, I, you know, I'm fine either way there, I think as far as the overtime with the twenty-eight day work period, you kinda eliminate that.
Yeah.
It seems to be...
You understand the limitations of, you know, you have an odd position...
Yeah.
Where you can put an intensive amount of time in, and it can't put you into overtime if it's just one week in the, in the entire month.
Right.
So...
That's the idea.
Some kind of a modified compensation plan is what seems to be dictated, with some kind of limits that the city can back up from if it needs to. And I understand what your situation is too, and I'm not criticizing you at all in this, Mike. I admire you.
I'm not taking it personally, I just have, there just isn't enough time, I just... It's, it's a struggle, and the more I push off on the other guys, I get guys talking about quitting, and I can't push more to other people.
No, that part I think we all understand, and I'm, and I'm in total agreement with you there, but this is...
And whether we go, whether we go with an hourly, you know, I don't wanna add a, I, I just don't wanna go through, rewrite the whole, uh, job description and add all this other duties, 'cause right now...
I wanna keep it simple too, it's been dragged down way too long.
No, that's gonna take more time to do it.
Resolution to this just as much as we, you know, so why don't we do it that way? We'll split the twenty-four hours into an hourly basis, and then when you're on the job as a firefighter, that's a different compensation level, and you're keeping track of your hours accordingly.
Yep, and I'm fine with that, 'cause I do wanna be able to, 'cause that was one of my dilemmas with the, you know, you guys are looking at the hours when I'm working and when I'm not working, and if I get separated up, because I have to be on that check sheet.
That makes it more simple from an administrative...
Check sheet, so that I'm in the difference of being there.
Yeah, I mean, that's the, that's actually a far better way of doing it, and there's, you know, far more accountability with that.
Okay. You need a motion then to go ahead?
So what do you, so what you would, to accomplish that, what I would need a motion is approving this resolution as amended to convert the monthly stipend to an hourly rate.
Okay, so moved?
Burnt my frog.
Yeah.
And then, do we, question, yes?
Do you need to rewrite the jobs description to...
We don't have a job, do we have a job?
Well, you do have a job description.
But you can rewrite it based on how it's being conveyed tonight by the council.
Right, and then, you know, I think what we can do is then is even get that to, for the work session for approval.
Okay, so, so we don't need to wait, I don't, from what I hear, the council doesn't need to wait to act on this motion until you have a job description, you can do that separately.
That's what I was wondering, how can we approve something without the job description tonight?
You're just talking money tonight.
We are talking compensation tonight, you know, for all duties as police chief, or as police chief. Fire chief. You're wearing blue, you're police chief. We can give you a little star to put over that.
Now, do you have in there also the piece about the, the work week, or the work period, versus the work week?
Uh, that would be built into the job description. So this is dealing with compensation, and probably, I mean, if you want, we could sit there and, you know, you know, have enough, you know, one of the things we, I probably could have added to here was an effective date. And, you know, we could do that as of whether it's June one, and then approve the job description in our June work session.
Okay, is twenty-eight days allowable, reasonable?
That is the maximum you can have for defining a work period. That is the maximum you can have for defining a work period.
Okay, I'm just.
So, there, there's a difference between a pay period for, uh, for law enforcement and fire. There's a difference between a pay period and a work period.
Yeah.
So, his pay period would be every two weeks.
Yep.
His work period for, for computing overtime would be twenty-eight days. That's the max. You can go seven, fourteen, twenty-one, or twenty-eight.
Okay.
We have to specify when the, uh, we're gonna say effective date, but how about the job description aspect of it, time-wise?
In terms of when we would do it?
Yeah, when will it be done?
June work session.
Okay, so we're gonna.
So, I would go six, one effective date.
We've got a motion that's been passed or, or it's been seconded.
It's been proposed and seconded.
I propose we amend that with a, a June first start date and then the job description to be dealt with at the June work session.
Okay.
I'm agreeing.
You're agreeable on that, all right?
You know, I got one other question.
Yes.
It's about the overtime thing. I wanna keep a cat, I got a hard time with the thirty-three grand off the bat, but I, I'm good with it. Let's do it. But there's, this gives you or the guy that's behind you or anybody carte blanche that, you know, I was on fires all week and I still gotta get this office worth it. You can do it, not saying that you're gonna, but you can make overtime for yourself at any time and there's no limit to what we're doing right now because of that overtime thing. And it might not be you, it might be your successor, it might be somebody else. But that, that, there's, we have no control over that the way this is going down.
It's covered by law.
I know that we have to pay him overtime. That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, yeah.
And we, we're all talking, we, we have a, a struggle here with this. Let's, this is a big step and it's forever, thirty-three grand. And now we get, we got a little thing where, you know, he can go off the charts if he wanted to and we have no, no control over it.
Well, you have control of it because he reports to you.
And is, is he account, how is, how is he accounting for his time? Is that your question?
Yeah, and, and who's gonna say, you, he can account, it could be time that he's doing. But it's gonna be more time than what we allowed money for, is what I'm getting at.
But if we, we.
You couldn't cap it, is what I'm saying.
But if we tell him that basically, hey, we need to, keep your overtime to a minimum.
Yeah, you can tell him that.
Okay, and we look at his pay, his, his time sheets and if he's getting a lot of calls and spending a lot of time there, then he should be taking the administrative time off in order to balance that.
We, we can do that?
That total hours.
We can tell him when he can work and when he can't.
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
So that you don't hit that.
Well, that's good to hear. All right, well then, all right. Okay, okay.
Don't put in your twenty-eight hours because you got a lot of calls this week. Cut back on that so that you don't hit any overtime.
Well, that answers my question then, all right.
Thank you, Brenda.
I think that should be a directive that we get them.
You're on a need, when we need you, we call you, is that what the deal is?
No, it's nice to get off early at times too, you know?
Yeah, you know, the situation.
All right, so we have a motion, we have a second, we have an amendment, we've got a, no.
Like.
Can we make it July one? I have to do other stuff before.
Oh, for sure, okay.
So moved.
That'll make it, that'll make it even cleaner, so there's not as much of a rush.
That'll make it even, but I can't, I don't wanna rush that.
Yeah. Okay.
All right.
All right, July one. So, amended and amended. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
All right.
That's all.
Started in November, it's not bad.
Started in June.
Okay, and now we're ready.
It's still less time than the Shorland ordinance.
To the agreement to the U.S. Solar Fixed Discount Value of solar sun subscription.
And because, if you wanna proceed with this, we talked about the work session subject to an agreement. I got the agreement on Friday and, uh, if we wanna go forward, I'd say, you know, authorize entering into it, uh, upon condition on review and approval by the city attorney.
Is that complicated?
Okay.
So, I, so I just, so I scanned, uh, this today, just looking over it briefly. I've done similar things. I'm not sure with this company, but with other cities as well. The one thing that councils have sometimes brought up as a concern, very minor concern, 'cause you're really not doing anything to get this credit. I mean, you're just entering into this agreement and then you pay them and then your Excel bill goes down accordingly. It's a twenty-five-year term, kind of long-term. Um, and if you get out of it early, if you're sort of at fault for doing that, then you presumably would need to sort of amortize what you would've paid U.S. Solar over the remaining term of the agreement, kinda pay that in a lump sum. I think that's how it reads. Uh, I have to work closer with that. So, that's, that's the potential downfall. If something awesome happens in ten years and you can get way more savings on, on this technology, but you're locked into this contract, presumably companies like this would, would change it and renegotiate because, you know, we don't even know what's coming, coming down. But that's the only thing that is a downside, I think, because otherwise you don't really have to do much to realize these savings. It's over, you know, twelve hundred bucks in the first year, I think, so.
But if you bail early, you have to basically pay out, pay back your savings?
Yeah.
So, I can, that's what I got, that's what I gleaned from looking at this briefly with each other today, but I can certainly, um, go more.
Is there a rush to sign this?
You know, at times, there is an availability issue.
Okay.
You know, if, if you look at it, you know.
Do we have an availability issue?
Well, you know, if you look at it, you know, even like the ones that, you know, that, you know, we have in our community.
Yes.
You know, they sit there and once the thing's built, they subscribe it.
Right.
So, you know, and currently, I think they do have some capacity.
Okay.
Uh, where we're not under the gun, where if we sign it now, we lose their capacity, 'cause I think they have three sites they're trying to subscribe.
Okay.
But, I mean, if we, the longer you hold off, you know, you, you just don't know what's in the pipeline.
And somebody else could jump the queue and take your spot if we wait.
So, if we pass this now with the, uh, on the condition that Andy reviews it and?
Yeah, review and approve.
And approves it.
But I think, you know, if I review and talk with Neil, um, if there's something in here that's really a poison pill, so that we have, we bring it back to you.
Mm-hmm, right.
And do the, you say you've dealt with this before?
No, I don't think with this company, but similar arrangements.
And do they have that long-term?
Yeah, I think they just have to do that because they have to lock in their subscribers to justify their project.
Okay.
So, we couldn't cut it at all and you?
We could, we could always try to ask.
Fifteen years or ten years or something like that.
There's no alive, no liability on us as a subscriber for anything that might happen to one of their solar farms or something?
No, no, you're just a passive recipient.
Okay, do we wanna recommend approval then with upon Andy's review and discussion with Neil?
Or you could wait for a subsequent meeting where that is, I'd kinda go through the chapter reverse of it.
Okay.
For approval, but then you run the risk of missing out on this one.
Yeah. How are you feeling?
So moved.
Which one? Which motion?
I would rather take the time to let Andy review it and I'd like to spend a little time looking at it myself.
Okay.
But.
I don't think we're in any great danger right now if we wait a month or so. So, I would, I guess I would agree with Steve.
I feel bad that we don't allow any more solar stuff, but we're taking advantage of it, you know?
We've got a lot of solar stuff in here that we're taking advantage of, unlike May Township.
A lot of capacity in this community.
Unlike May Township.
We've got a lot of capacity.
We're making big money out of it.
I know, it sounds like.
We should benefit a little from everything we've given now.
And we can get in on a twenty-five-year deal.
All right, all right, so what is the, we have, Steve made a motion to wait.
We don't, you don't have to do anything.
Unless people wanna make a motion, count it to that.
No.
No, okay, a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, we got out before ten, everybody. Is he happy?